Good evening and welcome to the August 14, 2018, regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. We have a quorum here, so I'll call the meeting to order. And if you would join me, please, in a moment of silence. Thank you. If you'd stand with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Okay, we do have some minutes for approval. And I don't have the dates written down here, but I have them in July 24, 2018. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes? So moved? Motion by Commissioner Isnardi, a second by Commissioner Barfield. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, passes 5-0. Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve July 10? Motion by Commissioner Barfield, second by Commissioner Isnardi. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, you're welcome. Thank you. We are into resolutions, awards, and presentations. USSA?
USSA here? Don DiDonatus Jr.? Yes, he's here. Just in the nick of time. Don, would you come up here? And I understand you have a video that we're going to play as well.
Since 2004, we anxiously await where the World Cup is going to be played.
Super exciting. I'm ready for a competition. We're ready to bring this home.
This is the highest that you can go in women's baseball. I never thought that I would ever see the day that this would happen.
To have it in our backyard is unbelievably exciting.
This is huge that it's on the United States soil. It's finally home.
To play the most prestigious women's baseball event at the USSA Space Coast Stadium is an amazing opportunity.
The whole complex is brand new. It's beautiful, right down in sunny Florida. It's going to be amazing.
There's no greater honor or privilege than having USA written across your chest.
And we're going to go out there and win some games.
Outstanding. I'm going to read this resolution, and then you can tell us a little bit about what's going on. Whereas, the eyes of the sporting world will be on our community as we welcome guests from around the globe to the Space Coast August 22 through the 31, 2018. When the World Baseball Softball Confederation, the WBSC, brings the Women's Baseball World Cup, and whereas the USSA Space Coast Complex is a first-class facility welcoming 12 countries to compete for the international title, and is proud to host this event, as it is the first time it has been held on American soil. That's a big deal, folks. Whereas, the WBSC Women's Baseball World Cup will give an economic boost to our hotels, restaurants, retailers, and tourism venues, including sales taxes that assist the Indian River Lagoon and road maintenance. The event will have an estimated $7.3 million economic impact. And whereas, the Women's Baseball World Cup presents opportunities for the Space Coast to build its future in international tourism as more people from other countries become familiar with the Space Coast through WBSC Women's Baseball World Cup broadcasts. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby unanimously recognize and congratulate the WBSC and the USSA for bringing forth this opportunity to showcase our area as a top tourist and sports destination. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 14th day of August, 2018. Madam Chair, I'd like to recommend that we pass this resolution.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, passes 5-0.
It's all yours.
Thank you for letting us have the opportunity to speak here today. USSA, we are extremely humbled and honored to receive this resolution on behalf of the WBSC, Eric Garvey and Bonnie King with the TDC, and all four chambers for being instrumental in bringing the first WBSC Women's World Cup onto U.S. soil. The impact of this event and the magnitude that surrounds it, I think, is uncharted territory for all of us. USSA is a multi-body association, and we're accustomed to running 400, 500-team events for teams from all over the country. But this event here with 12 countries, I've never seen an impact, and I've never seen the amount of energy and the amount of just anticipation for an event of this magnitude. So I really would like to thank the county, the county commissioners, the TDC. You guys have been amazing partners since the first day we stepped foot in this county. And it's been refreshing on my behalf, because I've kind of been a part of where we came from. And, you know, it just kind of always felt like we were, you know, we were not on the same page. And timing is everything, and everything happens for a reason. And like I said, USSA, we could not be happier to have partners, you know, within the county, and the TDC, and the support that you guys have given us. The visibility of the trophy tour, you know, has reached, you know, tens of millions of people. The visibility that has been brought to the county and the Space Coast has been, again, greater than I think any of us could imagine. The beauty of it is, I think, we're just scratching the surface as far as future events that we can bring to this county with partnerships like the WBSC. And, you know, again, with the resources you guys have and making sure that everyone feels as welcome as we did coming into this county. I'm looking forward to, you know, these next couple of weeks, because I really think the impact is going to be felt. And it's just a great opportunity to be a part of something, you know, so much bigger than what we've ever done before. So, again, nothing but thanks and praise to all the support from the county, the TDC. You know, everyone has been, you know, there's been so many people instrumental in making this happen. And this is a dream come true. And again, just the beginning of, I think, many great things to come for the future. So, once again, like I said, could not be more happy and blessed to be partners with you guys. And looking forward to, you know, again, to bring in, you know, more visibility to the county, to the facility, and to working together into making that happen. So, thank you, guys, for having me here today and to be able to speak.
Mr. Donatus, I would just want to say I'm so thankful USSA picked Brevard County. And it's kind of significant, you're in the middle of the county, too. In Titusville last weekend, we had a lot of hotels filled up and restaurants from overflow. And I appreciate it, and it's great tourism you're bringing in with the families. And the pride's not doing too shabby this year either. So, thank you. We're glad you're here. Thank you. All right, we're moving into consent agenda, commissioners. Do you have anything you'd like to have pulled? Oh, sorry, Commissioner Barfield?
Yes, I just want to go ahead and vote no on F1.
No on F1. Okay. And you're just going to have that go into the vote, sir, correct? Commissioners, any other comments before we take a motion? All right. Can I have a motion to approve consent agenda with Commissioner Barfield voting no on F1? Motion by Commissioner Barfield, a second by Commissioner Tabia. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, passes 5-0. We are going to move into public hearings. I don't have any comment cards. And we're going to move into item J1. I'm sorry. That's H1.
Can you hear me now? Okay. This item is in regards to the Riverside Pipeline Replacement, that we've had trouble with that line for quite a while. Many breaks in the line. And so, we're replacing that line at a cost of about $7.8 million. It's in design right now. And we're going to be paying for it through the SRF, this Florida Retirement System, I mean, I'm sorry, the state revolving loan fund, which gives us an interest advantage over conventional financing. So, this is part of the requirement for an SRF loan. That is to conduct a public hearing, to have the project approved at a public hearing.
Thank you. Commissioners, your pleasure? How much a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Isnardi, a second by Commissioner Smith. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, passes 5-0. Commissioners, we're going to go into number two next, but Ms. Rosankis here, and she requested on item I2, they would like to table it to October 23. So with your permission, I'd like to receive a motion to table item 2 to... Motion by Commissioner Barfield, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Isnardi. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, passes 5-0. Thank you, ma'am. Item 2, H2. Do we have the TDC here, or Mr. Abate, or you?
Bonnie was here. I don't know where...
Okay, let's go into...
Yeah, she's coming.
Okay.
Sorry about that. This is the second reading that we have for the change on the ordinance to the tourist tax budget plan, where the changes were needed to include the language of lagoon and the estuary projects to be funded with the beach improvement. And it would provide up to $1 million per year of tourist tax revenue funds to be used for Indian River Lagoon-related projects, and approval of any necessary budget change requests related to the ordinance changes. This, of course, went out for, this came before your July 24 to go out to advertise, and it was advertised on August 2.
Thank you, ma'am. Commission, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Isnardi, do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Barfield. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, passes 5-0. We are moving into item I1.
Good evening, commissioners. Item I1 is a request for a waiver of Section 622883D, which requires a 15-foot buffer tract along the perimeter of a residential subdivision for the Abaco's Town Home Site Plan. This section of the code requires that when you have an attached town home subdivision, that you provide a 15-foot buffer tract. This item went to you on July 24. It was tabled to allow for notification to the adjacent property owners. That has been done, and the applicant is here tonight to speak. And if I may mention, we did receive one letter in opposition from the property owners.
Thank you. Commissioner Isnardi, did you want to speak before I...
Yes. Can we just talk a little bit about the history and why this was in place initially, and how this is sort of a unique situation to perhaps, like, get on the record of how we got here?
So, I think what you're asking is the subdivision code. If this were a detached, single-family subdivision, it would not be a need to provide the 15-foot buffer tract. But since it is a town home subdivision, the 15-foot buffer tract is required.
Mr. Moya?
Yes, thank you. Hi, good evening, commissioners. Bruce Moyer with MBV Engineering. I'll elaborate on the history, I think, that you were talking about, Commissioner Isnardi. I know a lot about it, because I actually wrote this ordinance when I was the development engineer for the county. It was kind of in a response to a lot of development that was going on back in the previous boom, where very large tracts were getting developed, very large subdivisions, 200, 300 lot subdivisions, butting up against existing subdivisions, causing some erosion problems and a lot of airborne dust. And so, one of the requirements was to put a perimeter buffer around the entire development to kind of alleviate that a little bit. This request is for just a little bit over half an acre. The only reason we're even subdividing this is because we're choosing to go town home. If this was an apartment complex, we wouldn't even have, we wouldn't be here. We wouldn't need it. So, we could build the exact same building in the exact same location. It's just that because we're subdividing, we're subject to this requirement. It's been waived many times in the past. We think it's appropriate to be waived here. We meet all the setbacks. And it's only because we're doing a plat that we have to even provide it. And for a half an acre lot, it doesn't really meet the intent of what the ordinance was really put in place for. So, we're hoping that we could get approval, and we could move on with our development. So, I'm here to answer any questions. The developer is here as well to answer any questions, if you have any.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Isnardi, is that a new light?
No.
Okay.
But with that, I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second. By Commissioner Smith, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, passes 5-0. Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I didn't ask. All those opposed, say nay. Passes 4-1. The Commissioner Barfield in opposition.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to hold tiny homes, because I think it's going to be a little bit more in discussion for time certain. And I'm going to move into item J2.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, ma'am?
Did you want us to redid in the record? So, item J2 is a request to approve legislative intent and authorize staff to advertise the title to the attached ordinance at least 10 days prior to September 18 for the public hearing. And what they're looking at is a modification to Section 621511, which deals with the Tourism One, Tourist Commercial Zoning Classification, to modify some hotel requirements.
Thank you. Mr. Knox, I have a card on you? There you are. Okay. Commissioner Tabia, your light's on, sir?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And since this is in the district I represent, I just wanted to weigh in here. Initially, I was not in favor of this. And let me explain why. This is specifically a carve-out, an exemption for one particular piece of property. While I appreciate the interest in the area and generally welcome development, I object to the fact that we are going to have a carve-out in our code for just one piece of property. I think we should treat everybody equally. So, I wondered if there was middle ground. And I put a change in here that I think would solve the issue of the carve-out and deal with Mr. Knox and his client equitably. And all I've done is delete the carve-out for the US1 corridor south of Miko Road. So, this would change the ordinance countywide. And we would not be extending a benefit just to one landowner. We would be providing that same equitable benefit to everyone. So, the only change are the strike-throughs there that identify that this goes to this one particular piece of property. Mr. Knox's client could still build his or her hotel. But anyone that decided to do this in a similar zoning class countywide would have that exact same benefit and would not have to go through this same process again. So, the edit is there for your guys' approval. I would make a motion, you know, subject for discussion, that we approve legislative intent and direct staff to advertise the title of this ordinance as contained in the amended ordinance I have proposed.
Commissioner Tabia, I can ask you a question, because I always ask, this is one of the questions I always ask staff when we're doing this. If we pull this off, is it going to cause any harm with any other properties? Is that cool with everybody else? Is it going to cause any problems with any residential anywhere? I know you always do research on those things. Or do you want me to just ask staff real quick?
All I did, again, all I did was just take out the one bit that is specific for that one section of County Commission District 3.
Right. I'm good.
So, this would change, clearly, we've gotten into changes with hotels. We've noticed, I mean, we took away the minimum square footage. We did that countywide.
Yeah.
This would do this countywide everywhere as well. So, I don't know how many, you know, I don't know how many it would impact. I just know it would impact everyone equitably. And that, I think, should be one of our goals, Madam Chair.
I agree. Staff, but I called and asked you this question earlier, how this would affect any other properties. And you said no other properties, which is Commissioner Tabia's point. Is there any that we should consider? Because this changes the flavor of it a little bit. Not that I'm still not in support of it.
Yeah. So, if I understand what Commissioner Tabia is proposing, that it would negate what we have for North Beaches and South Beaches and Merritt Island, and that this would just apply universally across the board throughout the county. And so, that's what we would be moving forward with through those changes. And that, so it would actually be expanding, I think, a little bit more than what was originally intended for the revision. So, if the Board so chooses, I would just suggest that when we look at the changes and we understand that we're really affecting the general tourist commercial district as it relates to hotels and motels, and that's what you allow us to come back with.
Okay. I'm good, because we're still going to advertise and...
Yes.
Do fact-finding. Okay, Commissioner Tabia?
Can we just get Mr. Knox to weigh in if this would meet his requirements? Because he's the one that brought this to our attention, Madam Chair.
You want to wait after Mr. Knox? Okay.
Scott Knox on this side of the podium.
So, nice to see you.
From 1900 West New Haven. Worked with the firm of Wienerman &amp; Malick. I don't have any problem with what Commissioner Tabia has proposed. The issue that really is, that he's addressing indirectly is the fact that when you change the floor area requirements for hotels and eliminated them altogether, you forget to change the densities. So, you have hotels located in property where, commercial property, where they have a 30, you know, per reger restriction as in TU1, which means if the floor area of a particular room is 200 square feet, you can get 30, 200 square foot units in there. And the market may not generate that. And you may want smaller rooms than that. So, I think Tabia's, Commissioner Tabia's change probably helps in the long run, because what it sort of accomplishes, what you tried to do the first time around that didn't really quite make it, because you had the density limitations.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Barfield? Commissioner Tabia, old light or a new one? Okay. So, you made a motion, sir? Are you making a motion?
Yeah. I'd like to just amend that motion with any changes that Mr. Cawkins recognizes that he, you know, pointed out. This was just a draft on my part to get rid of the individual delineation. So, if you notice any other changes that were unintended, I would make the motion that he had the authority to make those.
Mr. Barfield?
I'd just like to ask legal, have y'all looked at this? Are you okay with that?
We haven't looked at this broader language, but Mr. Cawkins has addressed the issue I was concerned about, which would be the breadth of the advertisement. So, we have the authority to run the ad the way it needs to be done and to address the other issues in the ordinance. So, I think we can make it work, yes.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Tabia, did you make a motion? Okay, I have a motion on the floor. I should have seconded that before we moved on. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, passes 5-0. And we're at a close enough to time certain, so I'm going to go ahead and move into item J4. Open us up, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to tackle this as logically as possible. So, I just wanted to answer a few questions, you know, so we would all be on the same page. Questions that have come up are, what are sanctuary cities or counties? And according to PolitiFact, there is no firm definition. But generally, it means that a jurisdiction has decided not to cooperate with federal officials. So, the next logical question is, what does this resolution do? And all this resolution does will affirm our adherence to the fundamental idea of following the law and reject the liberal movement to protect illegal immigrants at the expense of our community's safety. It prevents future politicians or sheriffs from failing to follow the shining example of Sheriff Ivy and interfere or fail to cooperate with federal government law enforcement. More importantly here, as we move forward, I think it's important to talk about what this resolution does not do. You will not find in this resolution any mention of race, ethnicity, or any other protected class of people. In other words, this resolution does not encourage or sanction racism or racial profiling. In fact, it will not have any immediate effect on current policies, because Sheriff Ivy has already enforced federal law. So, one may ask, why is it necessary? And that is a darn good question. I wish it was not necessary. But sanctuary cities sacrifice fiscal responsibilities and community safety to protect unlawful immigrants. Jurisdictions like Alachua and Clay Counties have in the past adopted policies which the U.S. Department of Justice had said interfered with the ability of local law enforcement to work with their federal partners. President Trump's administration sent a letter to West Palm Beach earlier this year because West Palm Beach refused to cooperate with federal officials possibly jeopardizing federal funds. I certainly don't want that to happen in Brevard County. I certainly hope, wish our sheriff would serve in perpetuity. But unfortunately, that is probably an impossibility. So, this would lay it out for not only future commissions, but future sheriffs. And that is the resolution, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, if you don't have any more questions, I'm going to begin and call in the comment cards. Okay. Mr. Philip Stasic? Thank you. Owen Wright? Thank you. Owen Wright.
Say again?
Raed Albesh. I'm so sorry. If you'd come forward and be ready, sir, I appreciate it. Okay, Masters.
Madam Chair and fellow commissioners, thank you so much for letting us speak to you today. As always, we thank you for your service, and we thank you for letting us address this particular issue. I am Phil Stasic with the Space Coast Progressive Alliance. I live in North Barrett Island, Florida. And the Space Coast Progressive Alliance asks the commissioners to vote no on Mr. Tobias's proposal regarding Brevard County as an alleged sanctuary for immigrants. We clearly see Mr. Tobias's proposal as a thinly- veiled political maneuver that is wrapped in an anti-immigrant message. He is attempting to corner you, his fellow commissioners, into playing a game that favors his political allies. It is, after all, election season, so we see that happening. Now, this is all at the expense of some of the most vulnerable among us, immigrants. His actions threaten immigrants of all types, including those that have come here seeking asylum for unspeakable oppression. We would support any effort that Mr. Tobias, or any of you, would make to encourage our federal legislative delegation to pass comprehensive immigration reform in a bipartisan fashion. And we would certainly support if you were to take that action immediately. It is their responsibility, after all, to get this done. This would surely alleviate our nation's immigration problems in a manner that we can all support. Now, we are honored to stand with the American Civil Liberty Union, the Southern Poverty Law Center, United Third Bridge, and all of our other friends here today in opposition to this ill-conceived proposal. And we would like to remind you that we are all immigrants, after all. All of us. So for our fellow commissioners, we ask that you vote no on this proposal. Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Just a second. I'm trying to be polite to y'all, but if we wouldn't mind not applauding or booing, let me tell you why. Because someone will come up you won't agree with, and I want everybody to have freedom of speech and feel protected in their views and opinions. It's not that I don't know that, you know, everybody's emotionally involved in this, but if you wouldn't mind, that'd be very much appreciated. Sir?
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman. Thank you, gentlemen and ladies, for allowing us to have the chance to speak here today. My name is Raed Alshabi, resident of this county for the past 18 years. I'm here representing many of my Iraqi, Libyan, and Syrian unfortunate families and friends who are stuck here due to the unbearable atrocities in their countries, atrocities and regimes that we were part of creating or due to our lack of involvement. These people are not of any harm to our society, as Mr. Tobias claimed. These people have very few options right now, and this resolution will just make their life even worse as they go through their residency process. This resolution will only enforce deporting many back to their doomed home reality. In 1939, here in Florida, we made an immoral call to reject a ship of 1,000 desperate Jews from seeking refugees away from the Nazis. They were forced back and denied entry. 250 were ultimately killed due to this immoral call. I ask you today, which side of history you want to be on? We are all for the due process, but this call will only encourage more prejudice and discrimination from our law officers in mis-targeting people like me with accent or ethnic background. Please leave this decisive resolution to our national lawmakers to deal with. Please vote no on this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Oliver Torres. Erin Adams, you'll be next. If you please come forward, I appreciate it.
My name's Oliver Torres, excuse me, and I'm an outreach paralegal at the Immigrant Justice Project at the Southern Poverty Law Center. I'm here today to ask you to vote no on the anti-sanctuary resolution. The resolution states that its purpose is to reduce individual tax burdens and to comply with federal immigration laws, but it would accomplish the exact opposite. The resolution cites a law, 8 U.S.C., Section 1373, that purportedly precludes local governments from restricting communication with federal immigration authorities. At least two courts have held that this law is unconstitutional. Even if it were enforceable, there is no requirement to actually do anything. Not participating in federal immigration enforcement is not the same as interfering with federal law enforcement. Every action of our county takes to work with the federal government is its own choice. Today's vote will determine Brevard County's ability to comply with the Constitution. This resolution would prohibit any policy that prevents or limits the county from lawfully complying with immigration detainers. But unless there's a judicial warrant signed by a neutral magistrate or probable cause of a criminal violation, there is no lawful way to comply with an immigration detainer. Local law enforcement is only authorized to enforce state criminal law. Immigration is federal civil law. Immigration detainers are requests from ICE, where ICE asks local law enforcement to hold someone for 48 additional hours, giving ICE time to pick up that person, even though that person must be legally released. Compliance with detainers is completely voluntary, as ICE has admitted in multiple court cases. By saying yes to ICE's unlawful requests and complying with immigration detainers, Brevard County is choosing to violate the Constitution. It is rearresting people who have been determined by a judge not to be a threat to the community, people who are legally required to be set free because they paid bail, served their time, or charges against them were dropped. Brevard County is keeping people in jail without probable cause that they have committed a crime, as required by the Fourth Amendment. The resolution states it seeks to protect tax dollars, but we respectfully ask, where does Brevard County get the money to house and feed the people it is unconstitutionally arresting for ICE? Brevard County has complied with at least 718 detainers and likely hundreds more. A day in jail costs taxpayers in Florida an average of $52. At most, the federal government is paying Brevard less than half that amount. How can a resolution that prohibits the county from ending this expense protect tax dollars? Nationwide, many counties have been sued for the same practice Brevard is engaging in. Several pay between $15,000 and $350,000 each in damages and settlement costs, and the average being over $95,000. We respectfully ask, where will Brevard County get these thousands of dollars? Will this not cost taxpayers? Brevard County's only obligation is to the needs of its residents. The people of Brevard deserve to live in a county where no one is too afraid to call the police and where taxpayer dollars are used to better the community. Vote no.
Thank you, sir. Erin Adams, Samantha Nazario, you'll be next, ma'am.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Erin Adams. I'm a resident of South Beaches, Commissioner Tobias's district. I am here because I'm suspicious of the motivations for this proposal. And that suspicion stems from the recent proposal, which was passed unanimously, if I remember correctly, against DACA. Commissioner Tobias, for that proposed resolution, used information from a group called FAIR. FAIR has been labeled by the Southern Poverty Law Center as a hate group. As a matter of fact, their chairman has known associations with white supremacists and anti-Semites. That's a dangerous type of person on whom you should rely for data. In addition, the study that Commissioner Tobias relied on has been debunked by groups as diverse as the Pew Foundation and the Heritage Foundation, opposite ends of the political spectrum. Debunked is bogus. I think it's extremely dangerous to go down this road of association with known white supremacists and anti-Semites, especially in the political situation we find ourselves in now on a national level. And it's no place for the county commission to get involved in those types of ugly politics. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Samantha Nazaro Mitchell Roffer, you'll be next.
Hi, Samantha Nazario. I'm here with United Third Bridge, and I also work for World Peace One. I implore the commission to please vote no on this particular resolution. It brings nothing but more discrimination, because we already have enough discrimination in Brevard County. It brings nothing but more discrimination, more fear. I am an American citizen. I am getting looked at and threatened to have ICE called on me. I was born in New York City, just because everyone's in a panic about immigrants. We're having enough issues in this county with race, as far as they go across the board in the county, to add now making it dangerous for people that look Hispanic to drive their car, people that look Indian, Saudi, whatever the immigration situation is. We're being called out on just how we look. It's not only happening to the immigrants, this engulfs an entire multitude of cultures. It makes a difference to a lot of people, because you look a certain way, it's going to make an officer feel entitled to harass you, to stop you, to mistreat you in front of your children, to pull you out of your car, to tell you that your ID is fake. And these are all true accounts that have happened to people that we know already, and you haven't even voted on this resolution yet. So as a mother in Brevard County, as a person that works in multiple humanitarian efforts, I implore this commission, this county commission, to please vote no on this. It's not the right fit for Brevard County, and it's definitely not a label we want, especially with this county moving forward. We're hosting women's softball next month. You want to be the county that's pro-women's softball and anti-immigration? We have to stand together as a county and remember that at the end of the day, we're all human beings. We're all human beings. And not for nothing, my experience is not going to be the same as anyone up on that council, because no one on your council really represents me and my culture. So you can't possibly understand how we feel. You can't understand how my son feels in school when he's told to go back to his country, when this is his country. So this is bad. It's bad, it's ugly, and it's horrible for Brevard County. I moved here for a better life. I never experienced racism in the South Bronx, and I've come to Brevard County and I've been looked at funny on more than one occasion. And until I open my mouth, I actually look white. Once I open my mouth, then that's over. But the point is, Brevard County is a beautiful, great place to live. Let's keep it that way. Let's keep being welcoming and open doors to anyone from anywhere. That's what Brevard needs to mean.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mitchell Roffer. Samuel Lopez, you'll be next, sir.
Good afternoon. I'm Mitchell Roffer. I live at 6025 Highway A1A in Melbourne Beach, 32951, in District Three, the one that Mr. Toby is supposed to be representing. I was wondering why Mr. Toby is introducing this, other than for political theater, because there hasn't been any referendums in my district. I live in the district, I receive my emails, I receive my mail, and yet we haven't been asked, as a community in our district, do we agree on this proposal at all whatsoever? Why are we wasting our precious time on this when the rule of law already exists in the county? Do we need a new law for us not to break any other existing law, like, say, robbery or kidnapping? I don't think so. We ought to be using our precious time to discuss water and sewage treatment in this county. We're not ready for 2018, never mind 2050 and 2075. Why are we talking about reducing the nitrogen and other nutrients than other pharmaceuticals and chemicals that are entering our waterways? I think we should, there should be limits, zero limits. That's another discussion, another time. But let's use our time properly, rather than talk about political posturing. Why aren't we talking about effective, meaningful, integrated land and water monitoring system to protect us, our county, from cancerous and other toxic chemicals that we're only discovering now in our groundwater in the county? We should have been doing this 25 years ago. This should never be happening now. Finally, immigration is a federal responsibility. Let's help keep the rule of law in the county as it exists without any non-useful laws. We don't need any more on our books. We don't even need, please don't even give this bill a second when it comes up, and if it does manage to get a second, vote no.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Samuel Lopez, Vicky Impaco?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Samuel Lopez, president of United Third Bridge, chairman of the Board of the Florida Puerto Rican Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. I'm here today because I'm asking the commissioners to vote no on this issue that Tobias, Commissioner Tobias, is presenting. You know, this is not the first one. First one was about Puerto Rico, and you guys remembered, you did not support him. And now he comes again with this other one, and DACA. And some of the commissioners, I think they voted, it was a unanimous vote, but the second, the next day, I heard on, I actually read in the newspapers that you guys had second thought about what you signed. And I'm asking today that you rescind that one, because having second thoughts means something. It means that your gut feeling was telling you to do something else or look at something else, and you just went along. But now we're finding out what this is all about. The third one now is sanctuary cities and all these policies. So we're dealing with an individual who's a racist. We're dealing with a person who continuously, when you take a look at all these resolutions that he's passing, who does it affect? People who look like me. Who is this going to continue to affect?
Sir, I'm just going to ask that you try not to get too personal with that line, but please continue.
Well, the people that it's going to affect, the people that look like me. And those people that look like me already have been affected, have been stopped, harassed by the police, asked, as she was saying, for ID. We don't need this. And so why do we need to continue to vote on things that basically are going to affect 40,000 people who live in this city, who predominantly are Hispanic, who live here, and basically the majority of them are Puerto Rican? Because this is who it's going to affect. So just like the resolution on Puerto Rico, this is going to affect a lot of Puerto Rican people who live in this county who are American citizens. So the federal government is already doing its job. It should continue to do its job. We don't need the county to jump on this or piggyback on this. So vote no.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Vicky Impaco and George Rosenfeld, you'll be next, sir.
It's Vicky Impaco.
Thank you. I was trying to get all the vows in there just right.
Thank you. I'm an engaged citizen and a Satellite Beach resident. Unfortunately, Commissioner Tobias once again drags national politics into local elections. His non-sanctuary resolution will have zero impact on an issue that will be decided by the White House, Congress, and the federal courts, not the Brevard County Commission. The only people who will benefit from consideration of this non-sanctuary resolution are fans of political theater. Don't fall for it. It's a distraction from the real dangers to our local community, like homelessness, school funding, the opioid crisis, failing infrastructure, budget control, lack of living wage jobs, and fixing our Indian River lagoon. I strongly urge the Brevard County Commission to delineate themselves from federal immigration policy unless it is to encourage Congress to pass comprehensive immigration reform. Please vote no on Commissioner Tobias's non-sanctuary resolution and rescind the commission's DACA resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. George Rosenfeld, Mary Hockins, you'll be next, ma'am. George, good to see you again.
Pardon?
Good to see you again.
Thank you, thank you. It's good to be here, always good to be here. My name is George Rosenfeld. I live in Suntry. I am a veteran of World War II in combat infantry and Korea in combat engineers. I am an American fighting man. My father came, my father was a legal immigrant to America in 1912 at age 30. His family came in 1905, but he had to serve six years in Russian army. Although a high school education in Odessa, he attended night high school to learn English and how to be an American. He served two years in US Navy in World War I and two more years in US Merchant Marine. He was an Americanization officer in both his American Legion and Jewish War Veterans Post. His children were members of the SOZ of both posts. His proudest day was when I received my regular US Army commission as an honor graduate from Advanced ROTC. My mother's parents were also legal immigrants to America, coming in about 1895. Some 30 years ago, my son Andrew worked for several years on Eastern Shore, Virginia, as eligibility worker for rights of migrants, agricultural work crews for Mexico. Although not all workers were legal, they were all here to work at harvesting the crops from Florida to New England and repeating it. They were not here as criminals or to cause trouble. The DACA children should not be deported. Although they were brought here by illegal parents, they only know America. We're educated here and speak English. The law is to become citizens already, exist to apply for citizenship, work and study five years, pass a written and speaking test for English and Constitution, not have a criminal record, and swear allegiance to the United States of America. Illegal immigrants are just that. They should not have sanctuary cities to continue breaking the law. They came here illegally and unvetted. These times are not those of the 18 and 19 These times are not those of the 18 and 1900s. Not all coming, not all coming here are refugees seeking a better life. Not all coming here want to work and help America. Some want to hurt America. Some do not want to learn English and to follow our laws. Some want to live as they did in their previous country and not become Americans. Sanctuary cities are not the answer. Please second and pass the anti-sanctuary measure. Thank you.
Please, no applause. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I only wrote it this morning, and I only got three minutes.
Thank you, George. Mary Hawkins, Yolanda Tishon, you'll be next.
Hi, my name is Mary Hawkins. You have no idea how much I hate being up here, or I hate speaking in front of a crowd. And sometimes you just have to do what you really don't want to do. And I could not look at the future generations and say I stood on the sidelines and did not speak out. There is a proposal to make clear that immigrants are not welcome in our area, to lay them as other, undesirable, lesser. This has happened repeatedly throughout history, to American Indians as we invaded their land, to Africans as we became slaves, to the Japanese as we shoved them in internment camps. All of this happened on US soil. All of these actions were legal, but they're just so wrong. Now, there's a new group that we're being, that is being targeted. We're paving a path that will only lead to hurting our fellow human beings, an atmosphere where hate is being created, and it's going to end badly. Don't help pave this evil road with small-minded hateful agenda. Let's just try and be nice to each other.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Tishon, you're going to have, thank you, I didn't do too bad. John Michael, G. Michael, you'll be next.
John, show.
Thank you.
Hello. Thank you for allowing me the time to speak to you today. My name is Yolanda Tishon, and I am a current resident of West Melbourne, Florida. I'm also married to a green card holder. I have come to speak out against Tobias' anti-sanctuary resolution. As a Catholic, I have been very concerned about my fellow Christian members who have either stayed silent on the issues of immigration, or have no compassion for the struggle of migrants in our country. Although the Catholic Church has consistently respected the rights of sovereign countries to regulate their borders, the US Catholic bishops believe that the broken US immigration system unjustly separates families, denies due process, and contributes to the exploitation of immigrant workers in the workplace. Pope Francis agrees with the statements made by the members of the US Conference of Catholic Bishops that US representatives must create legislation that is pro-family and respectful of human dignity. Our current legislation allows the incarceration of families and the separation of children from their parents. The family is the central social institution that must be supported and strengthened, not undermined. Catholics have a duty to protect the family unit, as they are the image of the loving communion of the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit. This includes protecting their right to immigrate as a family in a search of a better life, which has been stated by both Pope John Paul II and Pope Francis. By allowing Brevard County to become an anti-sanctuary county, we would essentially be supporting the eventual incarceration and separation of families. I cannot in good conscience support a policy that harms families. A growing populism has led to the fear of migrants. Although it is not a sin to have fear or doubts, it is a sin to allow these fears to determine our responses, to limit our choices, to compromise respect and generosity, to feed hostility and rejection. The sin is to refuse to encounter the other, to encounter the different, to encounter the neighbor, which this is in fact a privileged opportunity to encounter the Lord. I shall end this with a passage from Matthew. "Every stranger who knocks on our doors is an opportunity for an encounter with Jesus Christ, who identifies with the welcome and rejected strangers of every age." Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Tishon, okay, thank you. Angela Roberts, she'll be next, ma'am.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm an immigrant. I'm a, I came over here as a skilled worker, so, and ended up staying here because I met my wife. And I like the country.
Welcome.
I'm trying, I'm trying to become a citizen. I should, I should pass my oath, maybe in two weeks or three weeks from now. I carry my passport and my green card most of the time, just in case I get, I get in trouble. I don't get in trouble. I follow the law. I try, I try my best. But, I carry my passport because I'm scared. I don't, I don't want to be arrested. I don't really want to spend the night in jail just to prove my identity. And, I'm carrying money. I mean, my passport is like, the French passport might be between $100 and $200. The stamp on it, the visa on it might be another $100. I just renew it, so I don't really want to lose it. But I shouldn't have to carry all of those documents on me all the time. So I, I don't understand why you want to enforce the fact that I have to carry all of those documents all the time. I have nothing against Mr. Toby, but I, I just don't understand what this resolution will, will give me, will give you guys, because, like, like someone mentioned it, Brevard County depends on tourism. You have Cap Canaveral, you have Cocoa Beach, I mean, it's beautiful places, and you're trying to get more international events. I just don't understand why bad publicity will bring more tourism in Florida. I think it will cost you guys, I mean, it will cost the county a lot of, a lot of money in bad publicity and, and also maybe for election too. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Angela Roberts, and...
Hi.
Hi. Radine Nelson, you'll be next. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Angela Roberts. I live in Atlantic District 5. I'm coming here as a mom. I have five children, and I would do anything to raise them in a safe environment. I feel like, I'm asking you to vote no. I should have said that first. I feel like a policy like this is going to make people scared to speak out when they're being victimized. I was, I was also a victim of violent crime. I wasn't a mother, but I can assure you that if I was an abuser of these women, I would never have spoken up against my assaulter, because I would be fearful of being separated from my family. I don't think that a situation like this is okay. This makes people remain quiet, and they don't reach out when they're being victimized, and that's just simply wrong. Please, we need to do whatever we can to make people, people feel safe to work with law enforcement, and this just wouldn't. So I'm asking you to please vote no.
Thank you, ma'am. Radine Nelson, Joel Tulley, you'll be after Ms. Radine.
Hello, everyone. I'm glad that you're letting everybody talk, and I think that's one of the great things about this country. I agree with Mary, I'm one of these people that don't usually do this, but when I heard this was on the agenda and being considered, considered, I couldn't believe it. I couldn't believe that we're doing such political posturing on the county level. I'm a descendant of immigrants, and I'm sure everybody is either immigrant or a descendant. I don't think we have too many 100% of Native Americans here. And, I think that we should be a welcoming community. My dad did, he was also a World War II vet, but he taught me love. He taught me we should appreciate and love all races and everybody. There's been bad things in the past. People that are coming in now are good people, and every, there's bad with everyone, and of course, that's what the laws are for. The county should focus on county affairs, not the leanings of national politics. I feel like by doing that, you're just showing your side of your, of your political views, and I always thought that the county was supposed to be just working on the county things and let the federal people take care of their own. I want you to vote no on the resolution prohibiting sanctuary policies. The county shouldn't waste the resources on this. The county should be using it for the state laws, the county laws, the city, whatever they need. And I shouldn't be wasting my taxpayer money on, on federal policies and federal laws, things that the federal government has to take care of. Let them do that. And, so I want you to vote no again on prohibiting sanctuary policy. Let's be a welcoming county, and not a fear-mongering, hateful one that makes people afraid to even go out in the street. Again, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Joel Tulley, Catherine Banco, you'll be next, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Joel Tulley. I'm the pastor of the Melbourne First Church of the Nazarene. I'm also executive director of a nonprofit organization by the name of Nazarene Centro de Refugio. I'm also the grandson of immigrants, great-grandson of undocumented European immigrants. My daughter is an 11-year-old Mexican-born US citizen for the past seven years. She has been singled out repeatedly as an immigrant, more in the last two years since we have moved to Brevard County than her previous seven years anywhere else we've lived in the state of Florida in the United States. Measures like the one Mr. Tobias has brought forward affect all immigrants, not just those who are undocumented. Measures like this point out our communities negatively in the light of tourism, international student enrollment at FIT in eastern Florida, and family relocation to our communities. We are in the process of inviting families to move to our community, immigrant families, and they are cautious. More than 500 communities throughout the United States, including states, have defined themselves as sanctuary cities or states. There were roughly 40 identified during the Obama administration. A major increase has been noticed since the volatile immigration policies have been implemented under the current presidential administration. Law enforcement agencies in cities that have become identified with anti-sanctuary status report a decrease in crimes being reported by the immigrant population as a whole, and especially amongst those who are undocumented. Organizations like the National Immigration Forum report that through community-building initiatives, local law enforcement agencies widely prefer operating with the, without the pressure of reporting federal immigration issues. It's interesting that the appeal is to honor the legacy of our sheriff, but the identity of many law enforcement personnel would speak against that. The Pew Research Center reports that violent crimes are at a 40-year low amongst immigrant populations that are even lower than that. On behalf of the church community locally, as well as the National Nazarene Immigration Network, where we have 135 churches represented in central and northern Florida, three of five Nazarene churches in Brevard County are largely immigrant-populated and multicultural churches. On behalf of the more than 40% of my local congregation who are immigrants, and on behalf of the community that I live in, I ask you to vote no against this proposal. On behalf of immigrants in my community who are university students, engineers, hospitality employees, business owners, community leaders, band parent association members, I ask you to vote no against this horrible policy.
Thank you, sir. Catherine Banco, Stephanie Steen, you'll be next, ma'am.
My name is Catherine Banco, and I'm District 5. While researching the sanctuary communities, I came across Frank Sherry, the founder and executive director of America's Voice. I will be citing his article, published April 25, 2017, "Immigration 101: What is a Sanctuary City?" Some of what I'm going to say is my commentary, and you will be able to tell the difference. Important legal point number one. Being undocumented is not a crime, it's a civil violation. Undocumented immigrants have rights under the United States Constitution. Important legal point number two. Holding an immigrant past the point of when they should be released just so that ICE can pick them up is unconstitutional. Multiple courts have said so. The immigrant, the immigrant can sue the police for unlawful holding. It's ironic and a little hypocritical of Southerners to consider non-sanctuary cities for their communities, because a lot of Southerners consider themselves conservatives and are supposed to support protecting local government from federal intrusion. At the end, at that end, there are pretty solid Supreme Court rulings, some written by conservative judges, that protect states' rights for determining over non-sanctuary policies. I am not sure how this new resolution making Brevard a non-sanctuary county is going to be, is going to read, but as a taxpayer in the county, I would be quite perturbed if an action were to be triggered, a lawsuit, by one of those bleeding-heart groups like the ACLU or SPLC. In a sentence, sanctuary cities make everyone safer. Research backs this up. One analysis has shown that sanctuary cities see 15% less crime than non-sanctuary cities. Another found two-thirds of the cities that had a highest jump in murder rates in 2016 were not sanctuary cities. In fact, they were opposite. Generally, they urged and held, they were eager to hold immigrants for ICE to pick up and detain. Again, I'm a little surprised that this commission does not recognize that sanctuary policies are protected under the 10th Amendment. As a Southerner, we all know the 10th Amendment separates federal and state powers.
Thank you, ma'am. Stephanie Steen, Sanjay Patel, you'll be next, sir.
My name is Stephanie, and I am, I live in West Melbourne. I am a therapist and a business owner in the county. But today, I'm here as a mom. I have a child, his name is Nicholas, and he is 11 years old. He's super funny, and he loves to dance. He's always doing the floss. If you have kids, you know what that is. He's in part of the Brevard County Public School, and he is in fifth grade. And he also loves football and is on the West Melbourne Broncos. They won their first game last weekend. My child is also an immigrant. He was born in Guatemala and lived there for the first year and a half of his life before coming home on a visa through adoption. Even though Nicholas is a US citizen, his life will be impacted by aggressive immigration policies. According to The Times' review of federal lawsuits, internal ICE documents, and interviews, immigration and custom enforcement agents mistakenly detain and deport people on a regular basis. An article by Jaclyn Stevens noted that almost 20,000 people over the past 12 years were detained, even though they were legal citizens. US citizens like my son are being detained because of clerical errors. Maybe it said junior instead of senior. Maybe they missed a letter in their name, and they are being detained. What this means is that my child is not 100% exempt from being detained wrongfully. So tonight, I wanted to tell you about my son and his story. But he is not the only one. There are millions of people living in the United States who also have a story. They will be impacted by aggressive immigration policies as well. So I urge you to look past the color of somebody's skin. I urge you to look past their immigration status and see their person, see their story, and know that they are more than a status. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Patel, Christina Golsian, you'll be next, ma'am.
Good evening, commission. My name is Sanjay Patel. I'm a proud first-generation immigrant, and I'm beyond grateful to be a citizen of this great country. Our charged national political scene is pitting neighbor against neighbor, and is even making it so families can't even have conversations at the dinner table. More than ever, we need leaders who will bring our community together, not those who will further divide us. Instead, County Commissioner Tobias has yet again decided to blow his dog whistle in an attempt to villainize and dehumanize immigrant, the immigrant population in this country and in this county. Rather than focus on the real challenges facing our community, like the disastrous health of our Indian River Lagoon and our county's crumbling infrastructure, Mr. Tobias has decided to shirk those responsibilities in search of an easy target to pick on. The truth is, over a third of Brevard residents are struggling to afford basic daily needs, including rent, childcare, and healthcare. Seniors and hard-working people in our district can't afford rent or their medications. While some highlight the low unemployment rate, we rarely talk about the elephant in the room, the fact that working people are working longer hours, at more jobs, and still can't make ends meet. I'm meeting teachers who are working second and sometimes a third job after a full day in the classroom. Commissioner Tobias wants us to believe that the handful of DACA students and undocumented immigrants in our community are the reason. But the truth is that Tobias and other elected officials like him don't want to be blamed for their inaction and abdication of their responsibilities to our community. They want us to blame one another so that we don't stand together against their failed policies, which have only benefited themselves and their cronies, not those of us who... policies which have only benefited themselves and their cronies, not those of us who pay the taxes and whom they were elected to represent. I agree with those who say we need comprehensive immigration reform, but that is not the job of the county commission. I am an immigrant. I am what an immigrant looks like. And my family, like yours, I come from parents who came from nothing. They worked minimum-wage jobs, started their own small business, raised four kids who eventually all went to college and got great jobs too. As an immigrant, I'm asking the community, when you think of immigrants, think of me, your neighbor, your friend, and don't fall for the ridiculous narrative that people like me are dangerous criminals or terrorists. I'm calling on the county commissioners to rescind the resolution opposing the Dreamers and to refuse to offer a second to this anti-sanctuary resolution proposed by Commissioner Tobias. We are all in this together, and we need leaders who will bring us together to address the real issues in our community. Thank you.
Kristina Koshian. Christopher Strickland?
Hi.
You guys need to work on your writing here on your names.
Sorry about that. My name is Kristina Koshian, and I'm a resident of Melbourne Beach in Mr. Tobias's district. I'm asking the commission to vote no on the non-sanctuary resolution. There has been so much anger and vitriol in the media, in political commercials, and online towards undocumented immigrants that I fear that we could be at a tipping point towards something very dangerous. I've spoken with people here in the Hispanic community in Brevard who are already afraid to go to the police for help. Some won't even leave their homes. To make undocumented immigrants feel safe to report crimes and live their lives without fear of being preyed upon by criminals, some cities are adopting policies that prevent city workers, including police officers, from asking law-abiding residents for their citizenship status. Last month, the Orlando City Council unanimously agreed to pass this kind of resolution called the Trust Act. This policy doesn't mean that undocumented immigrants can commit crimes and get away with them, nor does it mean that federal warrants will go unanswered. It simply means that people who are not breaking the law and committing crimes will not be asked about their citizenship status. Sadly, the resolution on the docket today promotes the anti-immigrant agenda. In a TV interview, Commissioner Tobias said that he's introducing his resolution so that Brevard County doesn't miss out on grant money that the federal government could withhold if we don't enforce federal law. That claim is patently false. One, the Supreme Court has already ruled that there's no requirement for local governments to enforce federal law. Two, court after court has ruled that the federal government cannot withhold funding from an area that doesn't enforce federal law. While I fully respect the letter of the law, being in the US while undocumented is a civil offense at the federal level, it's not a crime. These offenses have traditionally been enforced by federal agents, not local police forces. This year, Texas enacted their controversial Show Me Your Papers law, which required local police to enforce federal immigration. According to a report on NPR's Morning Edition, the Houston Police data shows a 43% drop in Hispanics reporting sexual assaults and a 12% drop in Hispanic-reported robberies and aggravated assaults since the state of Texas began authorizing any Texas officer to check the immigration status of the subject they detain. We don't want people to become afraid to seek help from the police. We don't want people to live in fear in their own communities. Please vote no on this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Christopher Strickland, Isabel Wright, you'll be next, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Christopher Strickland, I'm also a Melbourne Beach resident. I am an engineering manager for one of the largest DoD contractors in the United States. We do a lot of cybersecurity work, and my job specifically focuses on hiring engineers for high-paying jobs. The area or the people that we hire are typically millennials, and one of the things they focus on when choosing a place to live is they value inclusion and diversity in their area. So this particular item, it makes it difficult for me to actually bring people into this area to hire for that type of job. So please vote no or not second this particular amendment.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Wright, Charles Graham, you'll be next.
Good evening. My name is Santa Wright, I'm a resident of Palm Bay, 15-years. I've been in this country since I was two-years-old. My brother served in the Marine Corps, and I'm a very proud American Cuban. And I say "American Cuban" because I was raised here, I believe in these laws, and I believe in this country. I don't like what's going on in Washington. I definitely do not support President Trump and his idea of what immigrants are. We're not aliens, we are immigrants. We immigrated here like everybody that sits on that podium right here. And I've been watching everybody, and everybody has commented on the laws and what we should be doing. I want to comment on you all. You all are elected officials, you all are immigrants, including you, Mr. Tobias, because you're from Hawaii, and Hawaii traditionally has a lot of Japanese people in there. Those people are immigrants as well, and I'm sure your parents came from somewhere because you're not a Native American. I have seen the indifference in your faces, I have looked at all of you, and the only person that I have seen engaged with this community has been Ms. Pritchett. I am so saddened that you, as elected officials, don't care about what's going on here, that you're showing these people that are not all Hispanic, very fear Hispanic, if you look at, these are voting people like me. And believe me, I will do what I have to do to make sure that those people that vote yes on this resolution will not get elected again, because you are not representative of this community, of this country, and of any American citizen or any immigrant. Immigrants come here for a better life, as my parents did. We came from a country that we were not allowed to speak our rights or have any ability for our families. And for you to say that you wish that the sheriff was in perpetuity, it is an embarrassment for you to be an American and say such a thing, because you know what that is called? That is called communism. And if you don't know what that means, look up what Cuba has lived through over the past 50 years, communism under the dictatorship of one man, and that's what you're asking this county to do. I am embarrassed by you, Mr. Tobias, and you and I have run against each other, we've all respected each other, but I am amazed that you will second anything that has to do with this resolution. We have to think about humanity, we have to think about this community, because guess what? We vote, and come next election, whoever says yes to this resolution is not going to be sitting there again. I thank you so much. I wish you guys the best of luck in making the right decisions if you want a political career. God bless you, and make the right decision, because this is about humanity. This is not about Brevard County. We don't have the right, the power, or any ability to govern on anything that's on a federal level. Thank you so much.
Mr. Charles Graham, just want to make a note, in all fairness, they're not allowed to talk because I'm the chair, so that's why you're not getting engagement. So just so you know that, you have a very caring commission up here, sir.
Good evening. I'm Charlie Graham from Satellite Beach. I grew up in a similar county to Brevard, suburban rural Kansas City, Platte County. Brevard's currently 75% white, Platte County is 82% white. It was much wider there when I grew up. I heard many N-word, hick, hick starting with S.P., Italian, Irish, Jewish, Polish, Catholic, Chinese jokes through those years. Some were funning, most were not. I laughed or smiled at many, they were racist. In flight school, a good buddy was marrying a Alamo grad from Tupelo, Mississippi. I was in the wedding party, so we left Fort Rucker for Tupelo for the wedding. One bridesmaid was in her second year of law school at Ole Miss, and her parents held a gathering for the guests and wedding party. I still don't know technically what a gathering is, but it was quite a classy affair. The father was a prominent judge, and the house was a gorgeous antebellum home, straight out of the movies. I made it to the kitchen, and I met the maid of the house. She was 50-ish, black, and dressed in the classic maid outfit with the apron and headgear. I asked her if she prepared the delicious hors d'oeuvres and canapes, and she started to nod yes, but before she could speak, the mom jumped between us and responded, "I'm glad you liked them, I made them myself," and escorted me out of the kitchen. That was racist. Later that evening, that bridesmaid and I had gravitated toward each other, and we were drinking and chatting with the other wedding party. The conversation somehow was directed to the KKK. This highly-educated, very attractive, second-year-law student let us all know that those nasty stories about the KKK were false, fake news in today's parlance, I guess. I was shocked then, and I'm still shocked today, but that is what happened when you let racism fester unchecked. That was racist. Often, immigrants are far better citizens than most of us. In Texas, legal immigrants had a criminal conviction rate 85% below that of native-born Americans. Hence, they were falsely accused from the get-go. That is racist. Sanctuary cities don't breed crime, they encourage people to report crime. In San Diego, 600 respondents were randomly assigned to one of two groups. Both were asked the same question, however, for the first group, the question was prefaced with, "If the San Diego Sheriff's Department said they will not work with ICE on deportation raids, would you be more or less likely to report a crime that you witnessed to the police?" And for the second group, it was if they were working with ICE on deportation raids. The results are somewhat predictable. 64% would report crimes if agencies were not cooperating with ICE, to 3% with. 64% to 3%. Think about that. What is the dollar cost of the law enforcement agencies from a policy like this resolution? I'll just let you know, Virginia was $6.4 million for the first year, $26 million over five years. The intent was followed through, and it would, if, so if we're talking about is a resolution that has no more authority, I'll finish it up. Therefore, unless the sponsor of this resolution is willing to state that this resolution is racist, I respectfully ask that it be withdrawn. Should that not occur, I would expect no other commissioner to second that motion. Thank you.
Ron McClellan. Laura Rankin, you'll be next, ma'am.
Ron McClellan.
McClellan?
McClellan.
McClellan? Come on up.
Ron McClellan.
Ron McClellan.
We're all going to have to go to card school here.
I'm a hair right here.
The very end of it, I'm having a little, it's okay, you figured it out.
I apologize, I have a Scottish last name, it confuses everyone. Madam Chair, Commissioners, dignitaries, citizens in attendance, and even our World War II veterans, thank you, sir, for being here. Why are we talking about this? We heard earlier that it's a civil offense that we're really discussing. And for clarification, I do not support, nor do I want, open borders. That is an overused juvenile attempt at fear mongering. So why are we really talking about this? Fear, xenophobia, to be exact. People have come here fleeing famine and the fear that we have only experienced on September 11th, and we still have not recovered. It is no secret that a resolution like the one here before you tonight impacts people mainly from Mexico, Central America, and Haiti. Italians were accepted, finally. Irish were accepted, finally. Germans were accepted, finally. Why and when did we become so afraid? It is no secret also that if you look hard enough, you will find the boogeyman behind every tree, around every corner, and lurking in every shadow. As Americans, we like to pound our chests, and as we sing the last words of our national anthem, we may not know the rest of them, but we make sure that we belt out "Land of the free, Home of the brave." But when we are driven by our fear, we are neither free nor are we brave. When we allow policies and even resolutions like the one before you tonight, we are not free nor are we brave. So I encourage you, in the strongest possible terms, if you must address this issue tonight, vote for freedom and bravery. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Laura Rankin. And Timmy Muller, you're next.
Hi, I'm Laura Rankin, and I live in India Atlantic, and I am the great-granddaughter of Ojibwa Chipewa, who survived the American policy of extermination. And I would seriously appreciate you vote no on this. I'd like to quote from Martin Neemuller, he was a prominent Protestant pastor who emerged as an outspoken public foe of Adolf Hitler and spent the last seven years of Nazi rule in concentration camps. I'm also a lesbian, and I'm concerned about being put in a camp. First, they came for the socialists, and I did not speak out, because I was not a socialist. Then they came for the trade unionists, and I did not speak out, because I was not a trade unionist. Then they came for the Jews, and I did not speak out, because I was not a Jew. Then they came for the immigrants, and I did not speak out, because I was not an immigrant. Then they came for me, and there was no one left to speak for me. Thank you.
Do I have Tenney Muller?
Terry.
Ah, Terry, that's an if-ever I saw one.
I apologize. Good evening, fellow Commissioners, I mean Commissioners, and everybody here. I'm here because I believe in this country. I'm here for my children. I'm here for those that are going to be antagonized by this. And more than anything, I would like to share my story. I'm an immigrant, first-generation immigrant from Nicaragua. We fled during the war times in the 80s. Because of great leaderships, I was given the opportunity to become a citizen, and I served in the US Army for four years, one year in combat. When I see Mr. Tobias's policy here, it really disturbs me, because I feel a direct attack against my family, against my people. And I try to understand, where's the hatred and why's the purpose for these type of decisions that will affect my friends, that will affect my family, and that would affect me. Luckily, as a veteran, I've honestly got to say, been treated very, very fair with respect and in a good way by society, all in all. But I worry about those that maybe don't have the same experience or the same background as I do, that go out there and every day and try to do the right thing, and they get pulled over because of laws like this, and they'll be antagonized or targeted unfairly. Just want to say that I've been here six years, and the six years I've been here has been very peaceful, and a lot of it has to do with my good friend Samuel Lopez and people that stand up for what is right. And so far, right now, I feel that everything's fair, but I'm starting to see with the laws and policies that have been put in place that we may go backwards in all the progress that we've been fighting for all this time. And I ask, you know, consider yourself, put yourself in my shoes with my family. Would you pass laws like that that will affect them, your friends, and your family that way? So I ask that you vote no for this policy. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for serving. Sita Begru?
Biggie. You're good.
Beggie. Beggie.
Thank you. Hi, thank you for this opportunity to speak to the commission, and thank you to everybody else for being here as well. I just got off work, so I did not prepare a speech, but I figured I'll speak from my heart. Mr. Tobias, I'm not sure why you brought this resolution prohibiting sanctuary policies, but I am an immigrant. And I want you to know, when I came to America, I came with $5 in my pocket, and I cleaned houses for $4 an hour. Are you afraid of me? Are you afraid of people that look like me? When I grew up in Trinidad and Tobago, I had 18 brothers and sisters, and America offered an opportunity, offered a dream, so that I can help my mother and father with my sisters and brothers. When I came to the United States, people were scared because they don't see people that look like me. Unfortunately, we grew up with a myth that white skin, corn-colored hair, and blue eyes was what was expected. That's what I thought I wanted to be when I came to America, because that's what was fed to us. But I want you to know that people who are different are no different from you. Most of us want the same thing that you want. We want a safe house, we want affordable housing, we want a job with benefits, we want healthcare, and we want to take care of our children. So I ask you, before you bring about policies that can affect so many people's life, think about it, because you may not understand- about it, because you may not understand why people come to America, and it's not to take your job, it's not to take your cities, it is not to commit crimes. We come for a better opportunity. And I'm asking all of you who are here, try to get to know your neighbors. We live in communities where we erect fences, where we have gated communities, but we don't talk to each other. We know about chicken tikka masala, and we know about Mexican food, but what do you actually know about people and why they come here? I think if you sit down with people one-on-one and you understand why they're here in this great country, which has been extremely good to me, to a point that I am running for State Representative in District 52, you will understand that most of us will give back to the United States, just like we got, but we have to protect the people that don't have a voice. Sanctuary cities have often been a place of refuge. When my mom had a difficulty when my father would beat her up in Trinidad and Tobago, and she was a victim of domestic violence, I had to cradle her busted head downstairs where someone hid her in their home. Had my father found her then, she would have been dead. When I myself was a victim of domestic violence, someone hid me in a church in Hollywood, Florida. Had they not done that, I probably would have been dead today. So I'm asking you, with the remaining years that you have left on earth and all the senses that God has given you and all of us, use it for the common good. Stop spreading hate and dividing this nation because it does nobody good.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Cameron? Cameron?
Fuck that, sir.
Thank you. That's not what that says.
Yeah, you can scratch. Hello, everyone. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I am a student at Florida Institute of Technology. Being the irresponsible college student that I am, I procrastinated. I didn't write a speech for this, but this issue is very important to me. I feel as though this issue jeopardizes the diversity at Florida Tech that I strongly value, and I believe the other alumni here at Florida Tech would agree. This represents an attitude. This policy doesn't need to happen. It's going above and beyond. Above and beyond in a way that we shouldn't be doing. We should be going above and beyond to protect the lagoon, maybe, but no, instead, we are going above and beyond to promote an attitude that says immigrants are not welcome here. An attitude that has put my younger sister in a position, who, she was adopted from Guatemala. I had to hear my little sister, who doesn't look like me, but she's just like me because she's my family. She asked my mom, am I gonna be deported? This is an attitude that we're perpetuating by saying yes to this. So I'm asking you to say no to protect the diversity that Florida Tech offers, to protect the diversity that this country offers, and to perpetuate an attitude that we are a welcoming country full of opportunities. Thank you. Please vote no.
Thank you, sir. Sheriff Wayne Ivey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I speak, if you don't mind, I think you've got everybody kind of scared to clap. So if you don't mind, we have a couple of veterans that have stood up at the microphone. I know Matt Wallace is back there. Could you let them just applaud for our veterans?
I'm not sure they're really scared of the sheriff, but...
Well, first and foremost, thank you for allowing me to be here. I'm here at the request of Commissioner Tobias to basically share with the Commission what we are currently doing in our law enforcement arena on this subject. In March of this year, we entered into a basic ordering agreement with US Immigrations and Customs Enforcement. The basic, the basis of this agreement is that if we have someone that's incarcerated in our facility, we basically, through the agreement, give ICE and the Customs, Immigration and Customs, the ability to come in and interview them from an aspect of determining their illegal status or their legal status. We also, if they serve us with a detainer, an ICE detainer, we house them for an additional 48 hours. That 48 hours gives ICE the ability to do their paperwork, to give us the per diem costs that comes with that. In fact, when we look at, if we're housing somebody, they're currently paying us $50 a day for each of the people that we're housing in concert with that order. I can tell you that since March, we have enacted, as part of that basic ordering agreement, 31 people that have been, that have fallen under that agreement, and that has resulted in ICE reimbursing us with $1,550 for it. Those numbers come in March. We had four, April two, in May we had 10, in June we had seven, and in July we had eight. That all fell under the order of that agreement. The services commenced at the time of the illegal alien's scheduled release. So if that person has made bond, if that person has been released by any aspect, that's when the services start. So we will not hold them for longer than 48 hours. That is the agreement that we entered into. Currently, or actually, when we first started, there were 17 sheriff's offices throughout the state of Florida that entered into the agreement, and there are over 40 now that have entered into it. It was done in a phase and process to evaluate the program, determine how it was going to operate, and then they started signing others up. It's a program that was piloted here in the state of Florida and is expanding out throughout the country. So that is our, we would normally call it a memorandum of understanding. The feds call it a basic ordering agreement, and that is the extent of our order. I can tell you that as long as I'm sheriff and that order is deemed legal by those that make those decisions, we will follow that order, and we will continue to partner with our federal partners to make sure that we are keeping Florida safe and certainly to make sure we're keeping Brevard County safe.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the sheriff? Thank you.
All right.
We are through all the comment cards?
Yes.
Any comment from the front? Sir?
May I?
Most certainly.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you for everyone showing up. I think this is a, this just is a testament to the United States that no matter what your opinion is, you have the ability to stand up here and voice that for a period of time. I'm not going to dignify some of those comments because they're personal, and I believe that if you actually read the resolution, you will find that none of the stuff that was discussed actually is located in that document. But I do want to, I do want to touch on one point that I think is, is very important, and I want to continue this engagement that is here. I certainly hope to see you here in a couple weeks. I want to give you a little bit of a preview of something that is coming out of my office, and hopefully, we can work together on this. But there was talk about me targeting a certain class. It was very interesting that the Puerto Rican population was claiming I was only targeting Puerto Ricans, and the Mexican population was claiming that I was only targeting Mexicans. Everyone believed that it was just them. So what I, what I'm doing here is, in a couple weeks, I will be targeting the elite, the business owners that abuse our illegal immigrants and hire them illegally, which not only harms them, but harms the legal immigrants by taking jobs that might not have the other opportunities to get, paying unfair wages, and dealing with that through the e-Verify system. So regardless of what your opinion is, I certainly would like to hear your voice as we move forward and we look at the business owners that are taking advantage of this system. Again, I appreciate your engagement on this, no matter what side of the issue that you are on, but I encourage you to please read the resolution, because I, I'm, I think following the law is not racist. I think it's a fundamental part of our society. I strongly, strongly believe in legal immigration. I just have an issue with illegal immigration. So again, thank you so much. I appreciate your time. I appreciate the thought. I appreciate the engagement. I just happen to disagree on the perspective that many of you brought forward.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners?
Okay. Well, if there's no comment, then I'd like to make a motion for the passing of the resolution, Madam Chair.
I have a motion on the table. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second?
No, 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 no comments from the front. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead, I'm gonna comment on this. Here's, here's my struggle. I'm just gonna have to endure this for a minute. Immigrants are so welcome here. I, as a matter of fact, I, I'm hoping everybody will move into Brevard County in the state of Florida. We absolutely need the workforce, just love to have families move in and...
Resolutions like this?
No, no talking, sir. I'll call, I'll just keep calling breaks, and we'll get through this. So everybody's welcome here. I, I think there's such a mess going on with social media, so much information going out that's so emotional, that's not based on a lot of facts, and it's, it's hard to deal with things that don't have truth in them. I think everybody has an ability to, to read through things and try to make good decisions, which we have to do up here. We have to try to make decisions up here based on information and things that we've been given a duty to do. I think diversity is very important. I think this country's based on diversity, and it's, it's essential for us to be the United States of America and to be a great country. I have never made myself greater by making somebody less. All that to say is, I don't know how to fix all this, the way that people have opinions of one another, and it's a lot we've got to get through, and we're gonna have to get through it somehow, in love, and I don't, I don't know how to do all that tonight or in this place. But here's the problem, is we do have federal laws in place, not on immigrants. Immigrants are, my mother came here from another country. She became a natural citizen, not a natural citizen. She took the test and became a citizen when I was 10. My dad is an Igkunkwin Indian. So I mean, I get it. I have grandchildren that are from Puerto Rico. I have grandchildren that are Asian. I mean, we live in this mix of it, in this community, and I've never seen a lot of racial problems in our community in Brevard County. I haven't. I haven't. It, it might go on, but I haven't seen a lot of it. I think we have a fairly good community. If we were talking about legal and not legal, I, I've got a duty just to stand up and do the law, and since it's illegal for somebody to cross the border without going through the proper channels, either you've got to change the law or we've got to abide by the law. And we have a duty to abide by the law. And if everybody who came here obeyed the laws and did good things, this wouldn't even be a discussion. But we have a, now, I'm, we have a, we have a duty to protect the whole community. So as far as this resolution, all that to say that as far as this resolution, it's not making a law, it's telling the county manager to obey the law, it's saying that we're gonna support the sheriff obeying the law. I can't vote against something that's saying we got to obey laws. So, you know, what you do at voting time is your opinion, but I have to do what I believe in my heart is right. It's not on people, and, and it's not on keeping people out of here, but it's protecting the community. I'm gonna call a break, and we'll be back in five minutes. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just say, I appreciate everybody coming out to speak on this, and I understand there's passions on both sides, but the one thing I kept hearing was immigrant, and this isn't an anti-immigrant resolution, and that's not fair assessment of the resolution. And, you know, I'm first-generation American. My mom is Canadian. My father was born in Germany. And my grandparents, I wish my grandfather was still alive and here today, because he will tell you, he's a proud American, and he'll tell you that he worked very hard to become American, as did my father. My dad enlisted into the Marine Corps, and before he could swear in, was drafted by the US Army and fought in Vietnam, re-upped for four years, but that's besides the point. But, you know, a lot of people were yelling, shame, and this, and it's racist, you know, and that's just not true. I mean, to be pro-legal immigration is not racist, and it's a shame that you would say that, and you would accuse anybody up here or making any sort of decision based on that. It's, it's just false. We are a country of immigrants, but we need to, we need to follow the law. I mean, I don't understand how anybody could be opposed to that. I'm frustrated with the fact that our Congress hasn't done anything to fix immigration. I'm frustrated with the fact that if I want a relative, I have lots of relatives in Canada that would love nothing more to live in beautiful Florida and come to visit me often and wish there was an easier process for them. But you need to be mad at Republicans and Democrats, because both, when both have had the House and the Senate, they have done nothing. They've done nothing to fix immigration. So if you want to be upset with somebody, use some of that effort and deal with them, you know, because they're the ones that have failed us all, in my opinion. And because they won't compromise, they refuse to compromise, and that, that is, that is the shame of the matter as far as immigration goes. So, you know, to paint this anything other than what it is, to me, is a shame and is sad. And that's why I'm supporting this, and I will support, you know, I will support this. I'll stop talking, so I'll give Commissioners another chance to speak on their own.
Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, I'll be brief. I know many of the folks in this room, and you all know that I don't have a prejudiced molecule in my body, but we have to follow the law, and I think everything that's been said before me is the way I feel. It's not about hating anybody or disrespecting anybody. We have, we're, we're Americans, and we have to work together, and we have laws to help us do that. So I am saying...
Thank you. Okay. Yeah, I have a motion and a second. We have a lot of problems we need to fix as a nation, a whole bunch of them, and we're gonna have to start working on those items. This is a, a resolution. I, I don't know if I would have brought it. I don't know that, you know, the county manager isn't already obeying the law, or so, I mean, it's, but it's, it's, it's something I'm not gonna vote against, and we're not gonna abide by federal law either. So on that, I'll call the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass this 5-0. Thank you.
No hate, no fear. Every grandson of them here, no hate.
I'm calling a break.
Every grandson of them here, no...
I'm gonna call this meeting back to order.
Are we doing the tiny houses thing?
Yeah, let's do the tiny houses thing. That sounds like fun. Number J1? Commissioner Barfield said this'll only take a tiny bit of time.
This is a request for the Board to approve legislative intent and permission to advertise revisions to Chapter 62, Article 6, the zoning regulations to allow for tiny homes on foundations and tiny homes on wheels as permanent residences. The proposal that you have before you would basically create three new zoning classifications in our zoning ordinance. The first would be a tiny home planned unit development zoning classification. This would establish some minimum criteria, like a 25-foot buffer, a 30% of that would be open space of the entire development, and would require that there's a 40% lot coverage. And that each of the lots would have access to a private, private or publicly maintained road. But it would also provide some flexibility for the developer to establish what the minimum lot width, lot sizes, and floor area requirements are for the development, which you all would be approving through the preliminary, or I'm sorry, the preliminary development plan through the PUD process. The second one is a tiny house urban classification. This classification kind of mirrors some of our more, the smaller zoning classifications in lot size, in lot width, in lot depth, but it removes, or it establishes a new minimum square footage of 120 square feet. And then the third would be the tiny home agricultural, and this zoning classification would mimic existing agricultural classifications with lot size, lot width, and lot depth, and it would also allow for a 120-square-foot minimum lot size, or a minimum living area. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them, or... If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them, or let us know.
You, you guys certainly put a lot of work into this, and I really appreciate it. Commissioner, what's your pleasure? Commissioner Barfield?
Oh.
Oh, Commissioner Tobias.
Again, just to echo the sentiment, thank you for all the hard work. We're, we're on the razor's edge of this, so what you came up with was, was new, and, and I understand how difficult it is to do that. In meetings, can you reiterate the planned unit development? What, what did your office hear back about potential development opportunities? Is, is the way that we have it set up where you believe that, speaking with private enterprise, will come in and provide this type of opportunity for tiny homes?
So, so what we did through our meetings, and we, we looked at trying to provide as much flexibility as we could for this planned unit development, or for the tiny home developments. We looked at some of what the existing codes are, that, like, for instance, Rockledge has a solution very similar to this, but they established some minimum criteria, like, I think it had a 18-foot lot width. And so the real question is, is I can't tell you that 18 feet is a good minimum width for a tiny home, or not a good minimum width for a tiny home. So, with this provision, we would allow the developer to come in and tell us what is a good size, what they want to provide in their tiny home community, and then you all, as the board, would have the opportunity to look at that, approve it, make conditions or alterations through the binding, or, I'm sorry, I keep saying Binding Development Plan, because that's what we deal with so much. I apologize. The preliminary development plan through the BUD process, and, and you all are familiar with that, because you've had a couple of those in recent zoning actions on your, in your most recent meetings. So, so I think that we have, Commissioner Tobias, we've, we've looked at what we thought would be limiting, as in the minimum square footage here. We, we've said, you know, let the developer define what the minimum square footage is, but when we, we do have a provision here when, as a 900-square-foot maximum, and when you get to the 900-foot, then you really are a regular PUD. So we have a set of regulations for that. And so, so we really have looked at it. We've tried to put it in a developer's court to tell us what they want, and hopefully it would be enough for them to move forward.
Thank you. And again, thank you, I think you guys were very flexible, setting up a framework for a, a solution that we really don't know, that, 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 that no one has quite figured out, but we will be on the cutting edge to figure, figure that out, and I greatly appreciate the flexibility that you guys showed on this. Help me with the new zoning classification. How, how would, how would that work? Would that new zoning classification allow me to go out and purchase a piece of property of a certain size, and then go out and purchase a tiny home, and then put that tiny home on that piece of property?
So, since these are new zoning classifications, all three of them that we are proposing, they do not exist. So the first step would be, in purchasing that property, would be, the zoning would have to be changed to allow for the tiny home. So, the zoning is gonna have to be established on any property that chooses to have the tiny home on it at this point, because we just don't have them out there, or they don't exist. So in doing that, once the zoning is changed, then the, the way we have it set up is that tiny homes would be a permitted use. So at that point, they would be allowed to be put on the property. We have provisions for both tiny homes on foundations and tiny homes on wheels for this.
But so as right, right now, let me, let me understand this. I wouldn't be able to go purchase a, a piece of agricultural land, for instance, that was three, or five, or 15 acres, go commission a home to be built, or purchase one, and then put that tiny home on that 15-acre zoned agri, residential agricultural piece of land without first coming to the board? Is, is that, is that correct?
That is correct. You would have to change the zoning to one of the new zoning classifications.
And would that have to be with each and every, with each and every new home that would come forward, or with, which, sorry, with each and every piece of property that was purchased?
It would be for each and every piece of property to establish the use as a permitted use through the new zoning classification.
So, again, and I'm sorry, but I really appreciate all the, the effort went into this. We wouldn't have, if someone purchasing a home that would go into PUD would not have to, the PUD would have to come to the board, of course.
Yes.
But every individual that decided to go the route of a tiny home before they could purchase that tiny, or, well, before they probably would purchase that, every tiny home not located in a PUD, let me put it that way, would first have to come to the board under this, under this piece of, under this ordinance, is that, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Regardless of the size of that piece of property?
Yes.
So, and, and you know, I'm beating a dead horse dead, but let me do it one more time. So if we had 100 people that wanted to purchase a tiny home and put it on a piece of land, we would see at least 100 applications during a zoning meeting that would allow them to, potentially allow them to put their home on that?
Yes, the way, the way we have it set up, or the proposed changes, that's, that's the direction that we would be heading.
And did we, and, and again, I appreciate the work here. You were dealing with, you know, five commissioners and, you know, the private enterprise out there. Did you hear, when you came, when you drafted this, did you speak with, you know, any of the builders out there? Was this something that they thought would be, would help the tiny home movement in Brevard County, or something that would potentially be a hindrance?
We, we have, that would be the next step through the legislative process. Right now, what we are doing is seeking the legislative intent and permission to advertise. So, we have created some, some standards, but they're just for discussion points, and if you all, you know, grant this, and we move forward, then we would further refine those into an ordinance, and then, at that point, we would start seeking stakeholder input and going through the public here, or the public process, and, so that would include going to the BCA, see the LPA, and of course, bringing it back to the Board of County Commissioners.
Madam Chair, can I switch the questions to the county attorney?
You have the floor.
And, and I've never understood exactly the permission to advertise. If we went with what we have right now, with a permission to advertise, and then we expanded that to allow, and I'm just throwing a number out here, five-acre agricultural or commercial, you know, residential zoned lots, would it still fit under that initial notice to advertise, or would we need, is that too large of a change?
What you have right now would be limited. You could direct the board to, or the staff to examine lot sizes that might be appropriate or acreage, and then give them some kind of leeway as to appropriate acreage sizes. Legislative intent is a, a policy by the board. The other thing you could do is ask them to come back with acreage analysis, that sort of thing, and ask for additional legislative intent before coming back with these items or other items. You have a lot of flexibility in that arena.
So, if, if, let me, if I was, and I think this is a great start, but if I was to vote for this, and then on the first reading, I was to ask to expand it to the, another, I'm making up another number.
Correct.
Two-acre zoned agricultural residential, would we need to re-advertise again?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Barfield?
Yes, we've talked an awful lot about, about this, and I really like the, the option one, or the, just the tiny house planned unit development, because really, these homes go up in, much, they're much better to be in a planned development, because there's green space, there's everything else of how that works, and it's, it also kind of protects the adjoining property owners, too. Because the way I read some of this, you could actually, if you tore your house down, you know, you would, eventually, you could put a tiny house there, am I correct? You'd have to go through the process.
If you successfully got the zoning changed, then it would be allowed to be intermixed with other existing zoning districts.
But I like, I think the tiny house planned unit development is the best way to go, same things we've done in manufactured homes and other places, too. I think it's, I think that, that's what I would like to see done. Now, I guess, though, how we would do this is, that's a question. Can y'all go ahead, if we vote, can we vote just to have you pursue coming back with a draft of the zoning regulations before we ever do an intent? Because it could grow a lot, based on what Commissioner Tobias said.
Yes.
So that's what I'd like to see us do.
Okay, I'm gonna, I've got two comment cards. I'm sorry, sir, are you? Okay, Mr. Michael Cheatham? Ms. Hauser, you'll be next.
Good evening, Commissioner. Again, I wanna reiterate, I'm sorry, my name's Michael Cheatham. I'm with Movable Roots, we're a local Brevard County tiny home builder. We got to share our home with you all on the last time that this got to come to commission. I wanna thank you all for doing as much legwork as you have. I'm sure trying to find, what you're finding isn't easy, because we are on the cutting edge of this, and I'm so happy that, you know, it's happening here in Brevard County. So, we just came back from, last weekend, from Orlando Home Show. We were invited as a tiny home builder to put a tiny home in a home show, and we had thousands of people through our home, and the number one question that we got was, where can I put it? Right? So, I would love to be able to tell them, we'll come on back to Brevard County, 'cause we have that availability, right? And talking to a lot of them, planned unit developments or tiny home communities are what they're looking for. So, they are a great option, and I think it's something that would be great for the county. Most of the developments, though, are gonna take long, extended periods of time, and lots of bankrolls to kind of get them set up. So they're not an immediate kind of option for tiny housers that are looking immediately. The other thing is, is that most planned developments set up their developments as rentals. So, the tiny houser owns the home, but doesn't own the land. And the American dream is what? To own our own home and own our own land, right? So, what I would like to see is potentially something in line with what Commissioner Tobias was saying, was potentially maybe stating on a certain size piece of property, maybe that's a half acre, maybe that's an acre, maybe that's two acres, that tiny homes are a permitted use, where the tiny houser won't have to roll the dice, so to speak, and buy that piece of property, and then potentially not get that ability to rezone the property. So, if it was permitted use, which we've already had the building department come out to our warehouse, we, you know, saw that the building department's kind of already come up with some wording that says, if the house meets this requirement, we're good, right? It, it, it's good to go. So the other thing that it does with the PUDs and the planned unit developments, is it also offers us multiple different options in the lower-income housing, the options for veterans' homes and things like that as well. But it also gives those same people the option to buy their own piece of property, say that be a half an acre, and they know that they can go buy that house and that piece of property and put it on there, without having to come back through the rezoning process. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Chairman, Commissioners, I'm delighted to be here today. Thank you for all the work that you're doing. I'm a resident here in Palm Bay. I have a, my name is Linda Hauser. I have a degree in public administration and many years' experience in administration and construction of affordable homes, both with Habitat for Humanity and For Profit Ventures. I am here as a person, a citizen, who is very involved and invested in affordable housing. I want to encourage you. I love what I saw with all the work that you have done already. I would like to see the process simplified, so that, as Mr. Cheatham had said, each person who wants to own a small home on a foundation or on wheels will not be required to spend your time or all the energy required to bring 100 or so applicants here before you and spend your time like that. So I wanted to support the idea that upfront, there may be usable purposes for certain lots of land, and I love the idea of community, small homes in community, the PUDs. If you think, to, to cast the vision, if you think of Norman Rockwall with the painter of light, and you think about a beautiful community where, where people are investing in neighbor associations, and they support each other more, it builds an environment where not only do we have a, a safe environment, but we have a, a place where our children are raised in safety, and we're able to invest in each other's, in each other's life and each other's pursuit of happiness. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Isnardi?
Yes, and I think us talking about this at length on, on this commission, you guys already know, if it were up to me, I would agree with Mr. Cheatham that was up here that was talking about permitted use, although I don't think that that's the flavor of the board. I do like the idea of allowing for zoning changes to allow these houses to go, and, and I don't know how we rectify that option, because I see the concern with, you know, does somebody go and buy the land and then hope that we allow for zoning change versus, you know, somebody, you know, it's a big gamble for somebody to take. However, again, since the board, at least it, I don't think the board would be favorable to permitted use based on any size residential property, I don't want to lose that zoning option for people who want to do that, because I'm sure there's plenty of people, at least I know in Palm Bay, there's a lot of people who own lots, who either are waiting to build or are gonna build in the future, or, you know, it would be nice if they had the option to build a tiny home. So, I mean, I would, I would implore the board, please, I, I wouldn't lose that zoning option, because in reality, and I'm not sure the discussions you've had, I know that you guys made your, the counties made their rounds with all of our offices and discussed this at length with us, but the reality of a big developer coming in and building a bunch of these little houses is, is not a very big one. Now, someone may do it, they may take a gamble, some probably very wealthy guy who's, who's, who can take that financial risk. A developer stands to make a lot more money building big, large homes than a bunch of these little tiny houses. I mean, that's the reality. Plus, the, not only that, the financial risk that they would take. So I think that this is probably gonna be more appealing, or at least equally appealing, to somebody who doesn't want to live in a PUD, because the cost to them may actually be more than going living out somewhere like Barefoot Bay, or, or living in a recreational park. So, again, I, if we're gonna do this, I, I would suggest that we do this right, and allow this option for people to change the zoning. So I would like the zoning to stay, the, the option to change the zoning to stay.
Commissioner Tobias?
I'd like to throw this out as a compromise. You know, Commissioner Barfield mentioned, rightly so, that he was concerned about these tiny homes popping up in between fixed larger homes and potentially decreasing the value, which is a very real issue. If we were to focus this on land that was zoned agriculture, and we were to set a minimum size of, I think a half acre's far too small, but if we were to focus it at, say, two acres, you know, a place that, right now, you can have horses and cows and bees, I don't think that a tiny home on that piece of property is going to decrease the value of the surrounding agricultural land. On top of that, you know, being, having a two-acre plot of land, it's highly likely that you may not even see your neighbors, when we're talking about a footprint of something between 150 or 250 feet, or whatever that was. If we made that new zoning classification or permitted use in an agricultural residential zone of two acres or higher, then, and, and I look to see what the cost... zone of two acres or higher, then, and I look to see what the cost of that property was in Brevard County, much of it is very reasonable, $15,000 to $20,000 an acre, then someone could make the decision to purchase that land without having to come to the board, not impacting the value of surrounding neighbors, and be certain that when that house was built, they then could put that piece of, that tiny home on that without having, you know, without having to go through the expense, the time, and the uncertainty to come through the board. So again, that would be zoned agriculture, you know, of two acres or larger. And listen, I'm willing to go an acre. I'm just throwing, I'm just throwing a number out there because I'm trying to ameliorate the concerns that Commissioner Barfield has, which are real concerns, and I don't think anyone wants, you know, that. But I think this is a fair compromise, at least a starting point, that would help Mr. Cheatham as well as, you know, get us, push that ball down, down the road and give folks another option of not having to purchase in a PUD that may not exist for years and years and years. So, you know, my, my motion would be to adjust the language and include tiny homes and whatever throws in zoning class of agricultural residential use of two acres. And again, I'm not stuck on that number, I've just randomly threw one out, two acres or larger.
Just let you know, agriculture's 2.5 acres, so that, that works.
I would, I would be more than, I would be more than willing to, you know, I would be more than willing, as a starting point, I think that that, that gets us, gets us closer to the goal, and we can readjust as, as we find whether or not this is adequate or, or not adequate. So yeah, I would adjust my emotion to change, motion to change from two to two and a half acres.
Commissioner Isnardi.
Again, without sounding like a broken record, I wish it was a permitted use in a much easier manner. However, I think, you know, there's pros and cons to both, and if that's, you know, and I hate to say if that's the best we can do, I'll accept it, but that's really, if this is the most compromising we can be on this, of course, I'd be willing to accept it. I am less concerned a little bit about, you know, since the permitted use is sort of in residential areas off the table, if the item comes back to us, then we don't, and there's a board that has to vote on the zoning change, I don't understand how that impacts somebody with a high-value home or goes smack dab between two high-value homes if it's not conducive with the area. The commission, whether it be us or others, would have grounds at that time not to allow for the zoning change. Because, you know, if Joe Smith comes in here and wants to put a tiny home on a, you know, half acre or an acre, and it's not conducive with the neighborhood, we wouldn't allow for, we wouldn't vote for it. I mean, it's really that simple. So again, but then we run into the other issue of, you know, if someone goes and buys a piece of property with the intent of building a home on it and then isn't granted the zoning change. So maybe this is the best compromise. However, I think you're really boxing people in to buy two and a half acres of land, and I think that there's got to be another option where they can appeal to the board. I mean, is that even feasible? If somebody has a piece of property and, and if you live out in southwest Palm Bay and you have two houses on your street, say, and you have a piece of land where it's not going to impact people's property, you know, do they have an option to appeal to the board or ask for a, I mean, I know that it's not really your standard variance, but...
Yeah, so I think those are all things that we would have to take into consideration in drafting the ordinance. If I understand what the conversation is now, is we're looking at modifying existing, or I should say what Commissioner Tobias is proposing, is we're looking at modifying existing agricultural zoning classification to allow them as a permitted use. And then so...
Of two and a half?
Of two and a half acres, yeah, yeah, as a minimum size. So then that does allow for it to go right in, and it would immediately be affected upon the changing of that zoning or the adoption of the ordinance that made that change. So the concern is that if we, in doing such, there may be an impact that's unforeseen because we don't have, we don't have our finger on every piece of agriculturally two acre, two and a half acre zone property, and there could be an adverse effect. So then, you know, the tiny house proposal number three is what we looked at as trying to be that as a starting point. I don't know right off the top of my head that we would be able to get to a waiver because that would be through the Board of Adjustments and it wouldn't necessarily even come to you all because this is zoning change, but we could certainly take that into consideration in what we put forward and see what we could come up with.
Because if the idea is affordable housing, you're not making it affordable, I mean, I know you'd say that certain, you know, agricultural land is inexpensive, but not everybody can afford a $20-plus thousand piece of property. And if we're, if the goal is to help people with affordable housing and help them, you know, put their roots here, then I don't know how this is helpful to them.
Commissioner Barfield?
I was just going to say, I'm okay with three. I'd like to also see us do one for PUDs. I think both of those are okay, and I'm with Commissioner Isnardi on this, too. I wish there was a way that we could figure a way to do two without all these coming to us all the, for every time one, you know, one would happen. But the other side of it is this, I guess, and I'm just thinking out loud here. On the second one, you know, we can always change the ordinance later because we've never had a tiny house come to us yet. So we don't know exactly what to expect if this goes through. Is that correct?
Yes. So if, the ordinance could always be modified later to be either more restrictive or less restrictive based on the starting point.
Commissioner Smith?
Well, I guess my problem with this is that tiny houses are unusual. It's not something that's common. In fact, we've, as someone's already said, we've never had one. So we're trying to fix a problem that we really don't, we really don't know what the problem is because we haven't had that come up. So knowing that they're unusual, they're not common, but they are tiny, we know that, I think a logical place would be to restrict them to something like a mobile home park or, or, what do they call them, the pre-planned homes, the pre-constructed homes?
Pre-constructed.
Yeah. Then they wouldn't be so unusual because they would be in an area where you already have smaller homes. And then if at some point in time we become inundated, this board or another board, I think then they, they will have a little bit more knowledge about these things, and I think people will have a better idea and understanding what they're getting into by making those decisions. So I don't know that we need to rush into anything at this point in time. I think the simple answer would be to restrict them to, if people want to buy and build a tiny home, I don't think they'd be out of place in a manufactured home community, and I don't think they would be out of place in a mobile home park. And let the park managers or the owners decide if they want them or not want them. That, to me, that would be the simple solution.
Tad? Okay, number one's a no-brainer, that's, one's easy. Let me ask you a question. Trailers right now, do they, what type of zoning do trailers have? Because I know, I have a lot of property, well, I don't have a lot of property, North Brevard does, out in Scottsdale, Memms, where they're big acreages, and they have a trailer there where they all live on and on a lot of land. So what do we do for trailers like that? Should I have texted you that question earlier?
No, I think it's, there's agricultural zoning classifications that allow trailers as a permitted use. When I say trailers, I'm manufactured homes. And then there's also manufactured home zoning classifications.
Is it different in AU to do that?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Is it a different kind of classification for trailers in AU?
There are permitted use in AU, I believe, and then there are different zonings that allow for the, the mobile home park specific, I mean, a mobile home specifically as a standard zoning classification.
Okay, the, my thinking here, you're going to have to help me with it, what Commissioner Tobias had mentioned, and of course, what's, I'm on board with Commissioner Barfield, too, because I don't think, you know, you have a neighborhood planned, and, but there's some areas like up there where there's big open areas and it just makes sense, you know, because if there's trailers there, why not put a nice little tiny home on and enjoy the water and everything out there? So would it work to do the same kind of zoning in AU that we do for the trailers, so they could put their tiny home out there on such a big piece of land? They're already used to these types of projects out there. Is that an option?
I think it could be an option, and I think that that's kind of where Commissioner Tobias is probably leading to, is that particular zoning classification.
Okay, I'm just, I'm getting a little bit of an education here with you while we're doing it. And I don't know how to get around the part two, since it's a new zoning classification. We're trying to do how to ease the pain with everybody having to come in and change zoning because it, because it is a different thing. So maybe if we, we did some of these and we also made it like in areas where there's already trailers permitted, maybe we just allow tiny homes to come in without having them, you know, go through maybe all of the board's actions.
So one of the things that we have in our, in our code currently is permitted use with conditions, so we can look at some citing conditions for that, maybe, and then bring that back as a proposed criteria for, for those to help, to help you all to ease some of the concerns that you've mentioned tonight.
Oh, thank you.
No, 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 I, listen, we, I think, I think we've had some really good ideas that are even more than the three options that we have there. Commissioner Smith had some very insightful observations about RV or trailer parks. In fact, I think we got a, a letter from Braveheart Properties detailing their desire to have the zoning in those, which makes a heck of a lot of sense, one that I, you know, certainly did not foresee. But I think we probably need a little more time to work on this, so I'm just wondering, and I don't, I want to keep the ball rolling, I wonder if we can enlarge the advertisement that encompasses all of these ideas so we, if we decide to contract it, we're at least covered? And, you know, and I don't, I don't know what that motion would be, but I know it would hopefully include Commissioner Smith's RV idea, you know, Commissioner Pritchett's idea on the acreage that are already permitted for trailers, you know, but I don't want it to stop here. I certainly would like us to work through this a little bit more, but continue with the advertisement. So I don't know where the chairman is on this, but, you know, I don't want to hit pause. We've gotten so far, and just to be clear, we had two, we had two issues here. Number one was the building standards. We got through that. I mean, we, you know, with Mr. Cheatham, we solved that. We had three, we had three options here, so half of the problem we have figured out, enough where we all, I think we all agree on. We're on the closing stretch right here, and I'd want to move forward, so I hope that we can expand it a little bit with the idea of contracting it, you know, as, as we move forward.
Madam Chair, if I may, I think that the way that we have the, the request written, we are requesting to modify Chapter 62, Article 6 of the zoning regs to allow for tiny homes on foundations and on, on wheels as permanent residences. I know Eden had some concern about us providing the proposed classifications and that being narrow, but I'm wondering if we look at that language, is it, is it general enough and broad enough where it covers the board's concerns and allow us to move forward with the legislative intent, start drafting the ordinance, knowing that those would come back?
I think with the board's direction and the discussion and that broad description of tiny houses, we can probably come back with a long description, which will include multiple zoning classifications and probably new classifications as well. So yes.
Okay, so we can move forward?
Yes.
And you'll go ahead and make the scope a little larger.
Yes, if I understand that that's the board's motion and vote, yes.
Okay, Commissioner, could I have a motion on that?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to expand the scope to include Commissioner Smith's, Commissioner Isnardi, Commissioner Pritchett, Commissioner Barfield, as well as my suggestions to the changes in zoning classification sizes and so forth.
Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Barfield, on favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, passes, five zero. Do you need still any clarification? You got it.
I'm just going to say, what I heard discussed tonight, just real quick, is that you're good with the PUD classification. You want us to look at the two and a half acre or greater agricultural zoning classifications and making it a permitted use, and then look at expanding or allowing them in the mobile home park zoning classifications, and then potentially coming up with some citing criteria that would allow for them to go in without necessarily having to come back to the board every time.
You got it. Thank you. All right, I think we're moving to... We did J two. J three. J three. We did J two, didn't we? Yeah. Did we do J two? Yeah. Okay. J three. Commissioner Is, Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My office continues to go through board policies, some that greatly need updating, and the education policy, BCC 08, I believe, is one that is due for an update. The last time this was updated was 2006. We're talking about retention across the ranks, and education certainly is something that benefits us as a body as well as individuals who are part of our, our team. Employees are only eligible for reimbursement for education that directly impacts their job for the county, ensuring that the organization as a whole benefit. It requires that employees who receive these reimbursements, which are merit-based and tied to grades, stay with the county for years or they're required to pay it back proportionally. The amount was $3,000. That was 2006. So if we look at the college board, I use that as a metric, since 2006, tuition as we know has increased dramatically, 66% according, according to the, the standards that they set up. So I would like to change that as, as we move forward. I put forward a few options. Option A is the 66% increase. That would change the $3,000 to $4,980. To put that in perspective, if the same amount of people that partook in it last year were to do it this year, that would be an increased expenditure of $15,840. Option B was to increase it to 66%, and then look at a three-year increase of a basic CPI of 3%. That would bring it to 5,440, and this would cost the county a little less than... little less than $20,000. Option C is some other option I didn't think of, but either way, I just would like to, in time, we have tight budgets, and we may not be able to give the raises that many of our county employees deserve. I think this is a benefit that we could offer everyone. So that would be my suggestion to change the education policy, Madam Chair.
Okay, we have lights on this. Commissioner Smith?
As my mother always said to me and anybody else that would listen, education's the one thing that nobody can ever take away from you. So it's extremely important that people seek to improve their education. So I think this is a great idea by Mr. Tobias. I'm good with either option. The only change I would consider would be to extend it to three years, require the employees that they would stay employed with the county for three years rather than two.
Commissioner Barfield?
I just got a question. When you say 66%, is that cumulative, or is that just overwhelming? Because, you know, each year compounds.
Darn you for asking. My simple math got me at the 66%. What we did is, yeah, we did the compound rate. This did not include fees. This was general, this was just general tuition. So the statistics have fees increasing at a rate faster than tuition. So this is aside from that. The option, I'm just gonna throw another option, 4980 is such, you know, $5,000, you know, is a more round number, but I'm open to anything. And I think Commissioner Smith brings up a very good point, that if we were to increase it, then it would be fair to extend that two years to three years. So I would have no problem. In fact, I think that's a good idea to change either option A or option B with the two to, or C, whatever, the two to three years, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Isnardi?
Yeah, I'm glad to see this come back, because, you know, through some of our most difficult budget times in municipalities all over the county, a lot of cities in Ari County and stuff drew back on that tuition reimbursement. So I'm happy to support this. I would support option B, because school is very expensive, and I think that offering to cover probably at least most of the costs of tuition is a good idea, and I like Commissioner Smith's suggestion that we move it to three years.
I got a question. This is interesting. County Manager? Okay, so like, the people that went to school here in 2015 that we reimbursed, the 21 of them, are they still with us? I know I'm throwing out a question you weren't ready for, but...
Yeah, I would have that on top of my head. I would say a majority of those employees are, and as the Commission's been talking about, we do have a provision, and it's on a prorata basis. So obviously, if they're not with us, then we would have been getting the prorata share on that 24-month period. Since we provided the reimbursement that they did not serve, they would, on a proportional basis, be giving back the funds. And if the Board does what you're speaking of now, that would be extended over a three-year period. So once we give that commitment, be prorated over a three-year period. But to answer your question, Commissioner, I don't have that in front of me, but I believe the answer is, we, a majority of those employees are here, are still here.
Okay. Another thing, Commissioner Tobias, you have to just forgive me for just asking some questions, because this really intrigued me that you brought this. I would think typically the County Manager would, but I'm guessing you've seen some reason that this is necessary. So I was just wondering maybe if some county staff came to you or just requested that you would research it. And it's just so different for you. So I'm just kind of curious, and I can't ask you off, so.
No, my office is pretty good about looking at policy that came before. As you recall, that we, gun policy changed here. That was a direct, that was a direct cause of my office going through policies and seeing that they needed to be updated. And I think that this is one that recognizes the hard work and dedication of many of our employees that are working hard not only to benefit themselves, but the entire Brevard County environment. And I greatly appreciate their dedication and want to encourage that as much as we have the ability to. And I think for the small amount of money here, be it $15,000 or $20,000, if we can get, you know, keep those dedicated employees, this is a great expense in our future.
Those are all true statements. It's just different. So I was just curious about it. Mr. Barfield?
Just one question, and I hate to sound negative, but if, like we went through probably about mid-2000s when we had layoffs, now, is there anything in the policy that if someone gets laid off, they're not gonna get double whammy where they have to pay all this back? It's not any fault of their own? So...
Actually, I recall when that did happen, and, yeah, we did not, if it was us doing the layoff and it was not voluntary on the employee's part, that was very interesting. Yeah, interesting you brought that up. That was in 2008. I will tell you, during that time, previously, under this policy, there was a dedicated amount in the general fund that was available. That's been eliminated. So today, one of the reasons that it is in the smaller amount that Commissioner Tobias has indicated that we annually do is because the departments, obviously, if you're an enterprise fund or an internal service fund, you may be in a little bit different position in terms of what resources you have available. But from the general fund perspective, you can't go to Human Resources today and say, "I've got an employee in my general fund department that would like to go into this program. Do you have resources to give me?" The department in the general fund has to find it within their existing resources. Otherwise, they would not be in a position to offer it.
So we have to, we're gonna have to find it, put this, add this into the budget? Is that correct?
Currently, under the policy, if the agency that is approving it has to show that they have the resources to do it. We do not have it as a general pooled funding source in the general fund. So if you wanted to do that, encourage more people to participate. If they thought, some people may not be doing it today because they realize their agency may not have resources available, so they don't even ask. So we don't have that source of money in the general fund pooled for this purpose, no.
So we can pass this, and yet there may not even be able to have the funding to use this? Is that right?
Right. Well, the way the policy works is, before you go into the program, you need to seek permission and grant, and get it granted by your appointing authority. And once that happens, then they would need to encumber the funds for the person. It's not automatic.
Okay, we ready for a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. And, I mean, that's a really downer, Commissioner. It's a very good point, very good point, but really downing a positive here. But, and listen, I wanted to add that in here, and I don't think, you know, our County Manager, any future County Manager would ever do it, but reading in here, it says, "Employees who separate from employment for any reason other than disability," or I guess this is it, RIF, right, reduction in force. So that would be involuntary, I guess, removal. Is that, is that...
Right, and that's when we don't, yeah, we don't seek reimbursement under that circumstance.
Great, thank you. I don't, I'd like to make a motion, but I don't know which one to, you know, A, B, or any other ones. I'm gonna second almost anything. So I just wanted to throw it out.
Commissioner Smith, you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion that we go with option B, and increase the term that they would be responsible to stay with county to three years.
Okay.
I will second that motion.
Do we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Tobias, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, passes five zero. Okay, we have a citizen's request. Mr. James Zolke?
This is a request from Mr. Zolke to remove fines that were imposed as a result of a code enforcement action on his property. The special magistrate found that there was a violation of our wetland code, and the fines have accrued to $15,274 to date.
Thank you, sir. Your name and address for the record?
My name is James Zolke. Okay, first of all, I'm going to assume that you all have gotten copies of both the staff report plus the Board of County Commissioners' agenda thing here, along with the other evidence that I submitted with the agenda. I am requesting that this fine be removed from the property for two reasons. One, this property was not wetlands. If you will look into the maps that exist, you'll see that the property that is in question is actually a road. And also on this, I did make a mistake. I said the property was completely cleared in 1991. It was in 1992 that the property was completely cleared. Just, but 1991, we started planting trees on part of the property that was already cleared. In 1992, we went to get a permit to clear the property. The permitting process at that time, they determined that the property was agriculture, had been in agricultural use since prior to 1958. It was therefore grandfathered in as agricultural use. And in 2000, I had obtained the property and I had applied for green belt exemption. That I was then requested by Brad from the Tax Appraisers Office to withdraw my request because it would only raise my taxes, and I'd already been grandfathered in as agricultural use. By being grandfathered in, I had already received a bona fide agriculture classification. Then after the accusation was made that I'm destroying wetlands, Mr. West came out. He said he would call in St. John's Water Management District. St. John's Water Management District said that this is agriculture. They known it's been agriculture for years, that there's no action need to be taken. Mr. West refused to accept the St. John Rivers assessment on the situation and pushed the issue. I then requested in 2017 that, for green belt exemption, Mr. Conley from the Tax Appraisers Office said that my property was not properly fenced for livestock. I currently run about 100 goats on the property. You don't run goats without fences, and still have neighbors. Neighbors will complain about the plants being listed. In April, I came before the Board to request that they request the Karen Wooster, Special Magistrate, to reevaluate her determination that she ruled in favor of Mr. Conley at the Value Assessment Board. In April, the Board requested that. She ruled back in my favor that she had made a mistake in her previous ruling, and that is the reason that I'd gotten this bona fide as of June 4, 2018, which stopped the fines, which brought me into compliance. I feel that in, that whenever I got the grandfathered in in '92, and then tried to reevaluate that in 2000, and it was reassured that I'd made that it was there in 2000, that that should be enough. And even without that, this, when she turned over her ruling, this should go back to January of 2017, which would be before the fines began. Also, I gave there several maps showing the road in existence prior to this, that it was not wetlands. I appreciate if you all would consider this. I have been through holy hell for the past two years over this.
I have to agree with him. He's been through government for how many years now?
A little over two years.
Here's what, from what I understand, and Tad, jump in, we can't change the rulings that are already done. And, correct?
That's correct.
The process would send you back into the magistrate, have to go all through the whole thing again.
I can't afford this.
And that's what I'm gonna propose to you right now, you know, see what we think here. What are our actual administrative costs here?
The actual administrative costs on this case are $5,137. And the reason that's the number is because the case has been going on for some time, and Mr. Zolke also appealed the special magistrate's decision, which then incurred court costs for that. So this is an unusual case from a code enforcement standpoint.
Mr. Zolke, can you live with that? We're not gonna be able to knock it all off.
I may have to. As I say, this is completely and totally unfair. The evidence is overwhelming, absolutely overwhelming, that it was a road there beforehand, that I had agriculture classification beforehand. I've given it to you. I've given it to Mr. West. The purple map that's in there is the one that the St. John's Water Management brought out whenever we met with him. He told me beforehand whatever the St. John's said that they would go with. Then he came back and said that they've decided that they're gonna tack my ass to the wall, to put it bluntly. And, you know, I haven't really no choice in the matter.
Okay. Well, let us talk about it a little bit more.
Mr. Barfield, what was the full fine on it, sir?
Thank you.
It maxed at 15...
Yeah, the full, I'm sorry, the full fine maxed out at $15,274.
Okay. Commissioner Isnardi?
I know your admin costs are over $5,000. What is the absolute lowest we could, this is obviously not his fault. I mean, this is nothing by any...
No, it is true.
I mean, whose fault is this? We made the mistake, or it was an incorrect ruling based on the information they had at the time? I understand that, but...
The evidence was presented to the special magistrate, and he found in favor that there was a violation. And so the evidence now that he's presenting, I don't know if that was presented to the special magistrate or not, but if that would be the case, then I think that it would have to go back to the special magistrate, and the special magistrate would have to take that evidence into consideration for the reduction. And I think that what Mr. Zolke has indicated, that he doesn't, he can't go back through that process.
This is just terrible.
How about, let me throw out an idea. What if we split it?
Sorry, Madam Chair, split which two numbers?
Split the actual cost. Maybe based on that there might be more stuff coming through. I don't think he has any more funds. If he hadn't have taken it, the courts withheld the decision that was made. This is just a tough one. Sir, jump in.
Let me throw something out. I normally am not the one to do something like this. What if we just waive the whole fee? End it? It's been going for years? Just waive it?
Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Can I ask a question?
No.
Sorry. I'm sorry, I, you know, dropped the ball on this one, to say the least. When it came to, this was pretty complicated. So, you know, my focus was other places today. Can you help me? Were there, Mr. Zolke's brought up some interesting points. Were there any violations found by the magistrate when it came to any impact to wetland? Because I think that, you know, it appears that government got in his way a little bit, but if he's clear of, if he's clear of everything, you know, I would certainly, you know, herald Commissioner Barfield's, you know, ability to waive it all. But were there any findings of impact to wetland that Mr. Zolke... any findings of impact to wetland that Mr. Zolke potentially did?
Yes. That's what the special magistrate found in, him in violation of impacting wetlands.
And that was not overturned, or there is no evidence to show that that did not in fact happen?
Yes.
Okay.
Based on what was presented to the special magistrate.
Okay.
At those hearings and what was presented. I wasn't present at the special magistrate hearing. I wasn't present at the, at the court case. So I'm presuming that that evidence was presented, one from the, one carried forward to the other, and then it was upheld at the court case.
So, you know, it sounds like government was at fault here a bit. Whether, what level of government, you know, is, is debatable. But it certainly sounds that Mr. Zolke had a little bit to do with the situation here. So to fully dismiss the violation at the expense of $5,400 administrative costs doesn't seem fair to the rest of, you know, county taxpayers. So I would, I won't be voting for the second, I guess, motion, but I certainly would support Mr. Barfield's first motion, which was the actual cost of the county and administrative charges of whatever 5,000, the reduction of $5,000.
Well, from what I can read, St. John's district did their valuation later on. And since it was ag, there could be some encroachment into the, the wetlands. And that's, that's a confusion to me.
Right.
So, which that is allowable to a certain point, if I'm correct. And so, you know, I'll go with whatever the board wants, but I, I just think it's time to get rid of this thing.
What about, I, I think there has to be something. What about 1/10 of it? $518?
Okay.
$518? How'd you come up with that number?
I took 1/10 of the, the cost of, so that there's, there's some payment that they're going to have to make. Because I think he owns part of it. So...
I mean, I'd prefer, because either way, I mean, the guy, you know, if you go back, he tried to correct the problem and then it turns out it wasn't. It was originally ag. It's just a, it's just a complete mess. And, you know, and I think fines oftentimes get egregious and admin is there already and code enforcement's there already. We try not to abuse our code enforcement department in our district too much, and they'll tell you that. But I, I still stick with my second second. I mean, we can make a nominal fee if that's, if that'll get the majority of votes to make this awful situation for this guy go away. But I think that, you know, whether intentional or not, or, or big bureaucratic nightmare that we caused, it wasn't, wasn't intentional. I think it just needs to stop either way. So, and I don't want to hurt this man financially. I'm sure it already has hurt you financially beyond, above and beyond what all these fines are.
Mr. Barfield?
Well, as we've all talked about, this was a complicated case. It's not, I mean, I'm also in the VAB and I've never seen one that convoluted. So whatever it takes to get this passed, you know, we need to, do I need to start negotiating or what? Whatever it takes.
That is not a good negotiation.
I'm not really familiar with this, other than what we've talked about tonight. But Mr. Barfield seems to be more in tune with what's happened before. You know, and I'm not one to usually waive prices because, you know, we have, we have things and procedures in place for a reason. But at the same time, it seems to me that we have made this guy's life miserable. So I'll support your motion.
Which motion?
The motion to waive it.
Okay. Well, before I let you all vote on it, I just want to say that I, I think there has to be some ownership there. So I, I won't be voting to waive it completely, but not that I wouldn't have come down greatly on it, so.
I second it, I'm ready.
Okay. I'll call the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Passed as 3-2 with Commissioners Tabia and Bridget in opposition. Okay. All right. Are we completed? No, I have a, Mr. Tovey. Sir.
Charles Tovey, 2555 Roberts Road, Melbourne. See your picture in the paper. I don't know which one it is. Right? And it could be a matter of interpretation. And what I want to speak in is the prejudice on my house. Now, I'm afraid to go home tonight because I might be attacked by a semi-truck driver parking on my road overnight. But I'm not allowed to jump my car off or unload my car or anything. But they're allowed to park all night. And then they're bored, so they have nothing else to do. And I try to get some sleep sometimes. And just as I seem I do, somebody comes along with their, and you make rules and laws about overnight parking and all the, but it doesn't apply at my house. 2555 Roberts Road, Melbourne. I do want to say about the lagoon, and I've been meaning to get up here, but there's been other important issues. And right now is the heat of, the height of the lagoon fish kill, or other fish kills around the area. And you can find them in late July, mid-August, October, December, February, and May. And I've outlined them in a book I wrote 20 years ago when I started on this problem. And why no one welcomes me and my solutions or my remedies to the lagoon is beyond me. But the fish kills can be averted, or at least minimized. And the same way with, and we have $40 million of lagoon. And everybody's making all this money and all these jobs cleaning the lagoon. And look at the outcome, the production. You don't produce, you get, anyways. And not one, no one, except for when I was at the lagoon house and got thrown out for talking on my phone. Outside, I'm talking on my phone and I get trespassed off the property. And yet we have people in this room that cause more interruption than what I do. And I feel that I've been prejudiced against, from my community, from the town that is around me, from my nation. And before I forget, I wanted to remind everybody about 9/11. Did we all forget about 9/11? Maybe no one has family, but anybody's my family. If they're not going to aggress upon me and they have love. I'm colored blind and I have many family members of different races and different ages and colors. And I love you all. And why all this hell's written all over my house? Because of why? And he's been through hell. You guys are familiar with my case and he's just opened the door for me. Thank you very much, Mr. Zolke.
Thank you. Were there board reports? Mr. Barfield?
No report.
Ms. Bentley?
No report.
Mr. Barfield?
Yes. At the last meeting, the zoning meeting, I made the motion and we discussed about doing a water study for North Merritt Island. And I wanted to clarify that in that was also a small area study going on. Well, this is separate of that, and it can be referenced in the small area study. I don't want to slow bringing the small area study into, to get approval. So that is separate from that. So I just wanted to clarify that, to make sure everybody's understood. And nothing else.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Tabia?
Thank you. I just want to point out the dedication of one of these board members. There is a new Isnardi on the face of this earth. One, Oliver, and Commissioner Isnardi, I don't, pulled herself away from a newborn to be here. So thank you for your dedication. Congratulations. And what a great name. Oliver is, is absolutely super. So congratulations.
Nothing better than great kids. Commissioner Smith?
No report.
Commissioner Isnardi?
Thank you, Commissioner Tabia. And I just wanted to say congratulations to my daughter Anna and Ron. And she is one tough lady. And we spent most of the evening and morning welcoming him, welcoming him into this world. And, you know, and the proud grandma of a nine-pound, eight-ounce...
That's a big one.
Oliver Jamison. And he's amazing. So thank you. So if I look a little tired, you know why. But I'm happy to be here. Thanks, guys.
Couple of, I got to go to the Purple Heart Ceremony this past weekend. It really touched my heart. And I just want to thank all the people who, who gave so much to do so much for our country. And George was there, too. George is everywhere I go as far as veterans things go. And I was able to go to a dedication last night for the Children's Hunger Project. And they're doing such a good work in our community. And just love that. I guess it's a ministry of what they do with all the volunteers. So I just wanted to give kudos out to them. And you guys have a great night. This meeting's adjourned.
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, or the program sponsor, and are solely those of the presenter. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, and the program sponsor hereby expressly disclaim any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public during any such period.